I was just curious if how other board members would feel about site visit, sidewalks, and potentially adding it in as a requirement for any master plan development. For our part, in addition to the neighborhood meeting. And then also just curious, is the intent for, Bob, maybe this is a question for you, the intent of the mixed use component to be only available and utilized by whoever the is living there residentially, or is this something that the city envisions as public mixed use on the site?
Oh, absolutely public.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, it's a, it may be a little neighborhood unto itself, but yeah, that's not to say. No, I would like to think it'd be against the law, for instance, to establish a a micro group in a master plan development and not allow that to be open to the public.
Right. So I guess I'm thinking in terms of like, if there was a clubhouse onsite or something recreationally that seems to be like an amenity to the residents.
Yep. And I think probably ought to be taken case by case. I mean, if we go back to the Kimball Health Center project, for instance, I, I don't know the answer to this, but I doubt very much that the intent there was for that clubhouse to be available to the public.
Correct. My assumption was that it wasn't in that case. So I guess that's my question is, is the, the vision of this in a perfect world with a, with a perfect balance within the project is that some component could be utilized by all members of the community?
Yes. And I, I would point to one, at least Denise and perhaps Isabel have seen a sketch plan for a master plan project out on Route One. And there were, as I recall, there were a few commercial uses, including probably some kind of eating establishment. And then there were multiple residential units. But yeah, every one of those commercial uses was, you know, just as available to traffic going by on Route One as it was, as they were to people living on the property.
Thank you.
To your point, Alyssa, are you inclined to make the requirements of for MPDs state that specifically? Somewhere along the way in the standards that, you know, whatever non-residential components of the project are developed are available to all, you know, residents of City Saco or otherwise? In other words, available to the general public and not just residents of the development?
I hesitate only because I could see situations where not all of the non-residential uses would be something that the entire city would benefit from, such as like a pool or clubhouse that was only for residents. But I do think that the overall spirit of this, we need to keep in mind is that it's benefiting the larger community in some way. So I don't know, Mike, if you have any thoughts on that?
Well, my thoughts are, it kind of depends on the project. If you're down on Saco Island, which is probably going to be a moot point now because it's, I think they're working on 24 duplexes down there, but this, this would cover or something on the other side of the, the west side of the island, something that might pop up. And I was, I would think most of that because there's going to be, if there was going to be any more, let's say the 24 unit didn't happen and somebody else dealt with it in two years. Then for sure, they would have to have, if they wanted to master plan development, they'd have to have a riverwalk in there. And my, our groups in the past, that, that was a big component for that one. Out on the Portland Road, we're opening up, even if we only open up what Bob and Denise is talking about, we'll probably open up over 500 acres. So there's going to be all kinds of different possibilities. I can see something like, like when you get out to Chamberlain's place out at Dunston Corner, where you've got some mixed uses, yet you've got a, you know, a tap room there and you've got that, that's open to the public. So I would think the planning board would want some sort of a mechanism where I don't know if you can, I would think that they'd want to be open to the public. And this, this is commercial. And I think the whole key to these things like Portland Road is, you know, one of the components is that 70, 75% of the overall master plan has got to be commercial. So in the intent of, since I've been on comprehensive planning commissions two times ago, that whole area out there in a Portland Road consists of primarily five or six commercial zones. And so I think that's the reasoning why keeping it commercial, because it's all about the tax base in the long run. And, and now that the water and the sewers extended all the way out to Aquaborgen and Saco Drive and, and, and talk about pushing it out further, I think there's going to be all kinds of activity. And so, you know, I think right now, the only two places that we're talking about would be this New Portland Road Zone and the Saco Island, which probably is going to end up being something else unless it's something small. So I don't know if that answers the question, but.
I think I'm just reflecting on the fact that we have recently seen someone come before us with a proposal for one of these that did not include any sort of component that the community of Saco would have been in and out of there for. So I know that, like what I see in the, in the packet right now is at the bottom of, mostly at the bottom of page 11, I think. I don't know if there's another section I'm missing where it talks about this as well, but just a, you know, the overall development concept provides for a mix of residential and non-residential uses. You know, that, that kind of, again, the spirit of similar to a contract zone, how is Saco at large benefiting from this?
Yeah, I think there was, I think the wording on on the, on the Bradley Street piece was, there was some wording that had never been used. And so there was some mistakes that were done when it got crafted, you know, once, once it got passed this group like us right now in the planning board, then it got crafted and it came back and, and there was some stuff in there that didn't have to keep the components in it. And I, I'm guessing that that our lawyers are right on top of this this time. Is that correct, Denise?
At this point, that's more of a question for Bob as to who's seen this most recent language. Bob, has this been reviewed by Tim again? Or Jim Cassifika since, no?
No, we're, we've pretty much, you know, set Jim aside. And then in terms of Tim, no, I mean, we'll certainly use him in plenty of time. And if any, as legal issues come up, we will turn to Tim Murphy, period. But at this point, no.
That would be something that we definitely want to do to make sure that that issue wouldn't come up again in the future. You know, when we might all, some of us might be retired and, and they say, why, how did that ever happen? Twice.
Agreed.
We, if I remember correctly, you know, from what I know and what I've learned about MPDs, you know, the viability of a non-residential use going into one of these projects could be, you know, and might be, and probably would be supported by people coming into and frequenting their businesses other than those who just live in the project. And so it, it seems to me like in the concept of MPDs, what you're trying to do is you're trying to build a project that helps to support to some extent, the residents of the project, but also has the ability to draw in people from outside the project to number one, make the non-residential use within the project more viable than it would otherwise be if it was strictly dependent on the people who lived in the project. And, and not only that, that goes a long way toward connecting the project to surrounding neighborhoods and making them all work together where people can actually without using their automobiles, walk to a bicycle to, you know, non-residential uses within the project if they live in a nearby neighborhood. And so it, it all seems to work together that way. And so, you know, to Alyssa's point, it seems, and I don't know how you exactly craft this, but to Alyssa's point, it should be clear that in an empty, an MPD proposal, whatever non-residential uses are proposed within the project are not being limited to and not restricted to only people who live in the project. Are open to people of the general public.
Yeah. And I think what we can do is get that language crafted to Alyssa's point, to your point, Don, as far as making sure that the language is that it's basically non-residential use for business use. You know, that's totally different than a private pool, a private tennis court, or something at that effect. Because some.
Distinction, I think Alyssa's trying to draw.
Exactly. So, so point taken. And Bob, I think we need to just address it with Tim, as far as the language that would allow that. Obviously with a high percentage of 70, 30, you know, non-residential to residential use on that area is probably higher than many of the surrounding communities. You know, we tested the litmus test with Scarborough and a couple of these others. They're more like the 50, 50. And so I think by putting it at 70%, you're going to really, really, they're going to need to have it open to the, to general public, you know, whether it's a local grocer or, you know, some, some other type of business or, you know, the people we're working with right now that we had been working with and they've gone silent right now until, you know, the zoning ordinance was passed, were predominantly business. And, and essentially residential was, was an added component, but it certainly wasn't the be all and the primary focus of their development. That said, that was before the 70, 30 decision. You know, I have no idea what that's going to look like, you know, with that, because we, we never really calculated that. It was just a master plan development.
Yeah. Back to the issue, hang on, Mike, back to the issue that Alyssa brought up too about, I want to go back briefly to sidewalks. Anybody else in the planning board feel that that's a, you know, that's an element that should be in our application standards or our approval requirements?
I couldn't agree more, Don. I think we should do it later on. I think the earlier the better. I guess my, actually be, to Bob is, can we do it in the, in the realm of determining an application being complete? Should we do it? I don't know, during a workshop phase or, you know, I, I'd like to try to avoid getting to reviewing an application for completeness and hearing waivers being requested and you know, I think, and then saying, oh, well, let's have a sidewalk and then putting it off. I think that the earlier we can do a sidewalk, I think better is, is just my point.
Maybe appropriate in the, before consideration of the conceptual phase? I'm trying to find the portion that you wrote up, Bob, that, that deals with that. I'm having a little trouble.
Yeah, conceptual is pretty early. I, I'd say perhaps between conceptual and then when the board actually meets to discuss the site inventory and analysis. That, by then we would have, we would have given the app a fair shot at their consultants getting out there and, and familiar with the land, putting it on a plan, identifying the wetlands, the stream, the streams, et cetera. So yeah, perhaps prior to site analysis and master plan being on a planning board agenda, but after the concept.
Yeah, I like the sound of that. Does that also give us the opportunity to informally discuss, you know, how waivers may or may not be applicable? I mean, it's kind of going back to the master plan piece and a lot going on and just thought, question.
My two cents worth. So how this all came about is for those of you that were following it back when it was Azores, back a year ago in May, I think for the first time, we saw some changes to this. And, and so the, the thing that's master plan language that's in there right now is very watered down because, which is because it never got changed. So what Bob and I did is nothing more than go back to the existing 23416 and take all of the pieces that were really had to go back in to be safe before you opened up the Portland Road. And it's not to say that Alyssa's ideas, Matt's ideas and all these are going to make it that much better because we didn't, we didn't even go there. We just went to the point where let's get it so that it's, it's okay. But you know, I think it's a scale of one to 10, it's probably at a seven and maybe it needs to be at an eight or nine. So I, I, I think, you know, tweaks that Matt's talking about and Alyssa's talking about and making sure that, that it all works. As we saw on, on this Bradley Street, if there would have been a site, there was a sidewalk, but if it just seems like on a master plan, when you're not allowing them to do site plan or subdivision plan until the master plan is approved, I mean, you're quite a ways along. At that point, you're going to want to know about sidewalks. You're going to want to know about a lot of these things. So I think the planning board really needs to be doing a site plan unless it's a a one acre plain Jane one, maybe in some cases you could waive a sidewalk, but in general, I would think at conceptual plan, you'd want to you'd want to do something like that.
And just to interject here for, for Bob's opinion here about, you know, the timing of this. I mean, keep in mind that some of these master plans that they're thinking about submitting or master plan developments or thinking about submitting, there's no land to sidewalk. You'll be at the end of a parking lot and looking at woods. And so, you know, there's, there's that element too, is at what point do we go and what type of sidewalk? And so, you know, what are the requirements there? It's, they're a lot different than an available open space property. Like for example, not that there's going to be an MPD at the former driving range. It's, I'm just using that as a hypothetical, but that's an easy lot to access is what I'm saying. Versus some of the properties that we're talking about behind the auto dealerships, there's no easy access.
Just to, just to play off what Mike and just suggested. Yeah, I, I think what Mike and I accomplished, and I'll, I'll give 75% Mike, 25% me. What was to bring us back to ground zero, what, what really it was to bring us back to what is now in the old zoning ordinance and 230-416. Mike had a couple of other suggestions and those have made their way in here too, but, but pretty much we're back to ground zero. I'd like the board to in a sense, take a step back and ask itself kind of a bigger question of master plan development, what is it we're trying to accomplish? I mean, you might even try to get back, get into Mark Ironman's head 10 years ago and figure out what he and Peter were trying to pull together with this. And that's pretty much directed at you, Don. But what we just witnessed and lived through for about three months or more with the Kimball Health Center property did, did we, was there value in that? Did we accomplish anything? Or did we all just give ourselves major headaches every other week for three months? And beyond that, I would suggest that if we've gotten back to ground zero with this, if, if only I could find the time, I, I'd like to just toss out the notion that we might be able to distill this down to six pages, answer the, the three or five big questions, say that we collectively arrive at, you know, what do we need to know about a piece of property that is potentially going to be a mixed use development with X number of trips in and out, X number of families, kids in the schools, et cetera? What are the questions we most want to ask? Knowing that we still have full blown site plan and subdivision review to come. I'll tell you, I came away from, from the community's first exposure to this section on master plan development thinking, you know, Mark Ironman, I acknowledge him as a master planner, he was at it for decades, has forgotten more than I'll ever know. With that said, I thought this was in a lot of ways, 10 pages of hogwash. And it did not really add a whole lot. What, what did it really add to what we would have known? If that applicant had come in and, and just started from the get-go with a sketch plan and then moved right to site plan and subdivision review. And I, if, if you can answer that, please do, because I'm not sure what it did. Other than A, Buffalo, some or most planning board members, some, some or most staff. And okay, we went through that exercise of creating the site analysis and so on and so forth. I honestly think any one of us could pick out a paragraph or a section in master plan development in all, in the old master plan and/or what's in front of us tonight as a graph. And then turn to either or both the site plan review ordinance or the subdivision ordinance and find language that is darn near identical. Well, that's food for thought and I, I welcome your input.
Has it always been the concept? Okay, that and now you've, you've left me a little confused about this, Bob, and I have to admit you've got to question, you know, what the original concept was. Back in early comprehensive planning, when this was discussed, is the intent of master plan developments to provide density bonuses in residential unuses, unit uses, excuse me, that are rewarded or are that, are that, are the reward of providing mixed uses where there are non-residential, commercial retail uses coupled with inherent in part of the project? Was that a concept?
Back, back in the day, Don, as I recall, and, and I'm, hey, I'm leaning hard on you and on Mike, who both sat through the the 2011 Calm Plan. And so, you know, you were as exposed or more so than I was to, you know, what, what is this new, new toy we're being handed to, to play with, master plan development? Where do we want to put it? And why are we doing it? My recollection, Don, is, or the impression after all these years is that once again, the mindset has been for years, and I think both of you would agree, Route One, they're not building any more land. We are going, the city is going to preserve it for commercial use. Second point, if we want to allow any residential, and admittedly, you know, the world out there would love to put multifamily development out on Route One. So let's, let's do it so that they can, they can, they can earn their residential, so to speak, but only if they propose a pretty healthy portion of commercial as well. So that's, that's how I look at it. I'm not sure so much about the, the increased density, but with the impression I was left with was that you, you can have a mix of uses, meaning that you can include residential units that otherwise you could not do out there. So you can have your mix if you propose it as a master plan development and include a significant amount of commercial.
Maybe I've been wrong all these years since 2011 and Mike helped me with this. Let me, let me back up and just briefly say that, you know, and I don't remember exactly what the numbers were, but I remember Mark Ironman saying in 2011, when he was working on our comprehensive plan with us, the city of Saco is going to have X number of residential units more in the community in the next 10 years. You decide where you want them and what they're going to look like. You're not going to stop it. You're not going to slow it down. It's going to happen. So decide where you want them and what you want them to look like. My understanding of the whole master plan development concept was if you'd like to see more commercial development in areas like a long Route One, and I hate to concentrate on just the Portland Road corridor, but if you're going to have development in that area from a commercial standpoint, then maybe what you need to do is incentivize that by allowing developers to put in, to add in a residential component. You know, that, that what's the lack of a better term, that gives them the incentive to do it. Right? In other words, it didn't sound like it was, two things were happening. The accelerated commercial retail non-residential component of Route One was not going to happen unless there was a residential component that went with it. And if you're going to have a residential component that's going to further develop in Saco, where do you want it to go? And is there a more appropriate place for it to go than in the outreach as a Saco and in single family subdivisions? And so with all of that in mind, I think that's the direction we were heading in at the time. At least that was the thought process that I thought we were in. And so my concept has always been, and I think to this day, my concept is as we try to incentivize developers to do the non-residential commercial development along Route One, we allow them the incentive of adding in at a higher density residential components that go with that. So that the whole project is viable. It becomes viable to them. Am I wrong? Have I been thinking wrong about this all these years? I don't know.
No, I, I think not. If developer, if you want to pursue residential along the Route One corridor, then, then that's fine. You're able to, but, but only if in, in the course, the current case, only if you provide 70% of your new development as commercial usage.
And I'm trying not to look at it in the microcosm of the PR district. Okay. I'm trying to look at it from a grander or from a broader standpoint of what about other areas in the city? And more particularly, what about the downtown area of the city? And the just outlying areas of the city? Is it appropriate to have master plan developments in those areas where we accomplish two things? We bring in the non-residential commercial component of development, but also, you know, with the incentive for developers that they have a higher residential density bonus, which they can take advantage of. You know, to develop more dwelling units in and close to the downtown. You know, so that everybody benefits, if you will, you know, from that development. I mean, you know, there are, you know, in some research I've done recently, there are cities and towns that have, and I can't remember the exact term for this, I apologize for it, but it's, they, they have a residential density bonus system. Where if, for instance, if a property owner downtown decides not to develop their property fully at the residential, you know, density bonus that's permissible, those dense, those residential units go into a pool that can be allocated to another developer who comes along and says, I'd like to do this and take advantage of pulling some residential units out of the pool. And, and you know, there, there are various incentive systems, it sounds like cities and towns are using to try to develop their in-town residential density higher than you would normally expect. And, and given that, that may be the incentive that is necessary for developers to provide the non-residential, commercial retail component that you're looking for in that downtown area. And so it's, it just seems like it's just another tool. And I don't know where I'm going wrong with this, but my thought to just, you know, I'm kind of rambling on at this point. Jeff, you had your hand up. Go ahead, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, I, I view it very much like you was, it's, it's a tool and it sounds like it could be a very useful tool. Specifically with the increased ratios that we're talking about. And, and at first glance, the, the 70% commercial, 30% residential, sounds logical. But that's true. Are we going to apply this unilaterally across any zone that we allow master plan developments? It makes a lot of sense in the Portland Road District because of what our comprehensive plan was really calling for. They're really calling for reserving much of the land along Route One from I-95 to Cascade Rose Commercial Growth Center to accommodate a wide range of uses, retail, service, office and light manufacturing. And to offer a bonus makes sense. And, and I really agree with like Alyssa's point about the, you know, making sure that it's very clear that it is, you know, a public use and Matt's point, because one of the big things that I think we noticed the first time, we kind of cranked this machine through the first application is that we weren't really, I don't feel very prepared as a town to. Is that we weren't really, I don't feel very prepared as a town to welcome a proposal for a master plan. You know, and that was where, like to Matt's point, the first time we hit a sketch review, a conceptual sketch. You know, immediately after, we should have been out there for that sidewalk, so we would have known the terrain and I understand that it's going to be a. Could very well possibly be a very vast track of woods. But that's our role, you know, we need to be able to see the topography, we need to be able to see the, the, the wetlands and stream issues, we need to be able to look at the tree sizes. Because all of those criteria come up in our review process. And it gives us all a much better benchmark so that we're not kind of dragging these applicants along saying, oh, no, oh, sorry, we, we got to back up again. We need to go and take a sidewalk so we can see, you know, the inventory portion. Um, I just think that having a lot of these things that we've learned in play. And even if it makes our master plan development document a little bit longer page-wise than we would like. I think it's important to have it in play now so that we look more welcoming. Um, because one of the big costs for these developers is all of the design and engineering time that they're going to have to go through if they make it. To site plan review. But you know, as we're working towards that concept, you know, are, are the streets going to be able to handle the volume of p- projected traffic? And we know it's an early projection in the sketch stage, but if they have a concept of how many particular units and what the traffic flow is going to be. We can be evaluating those things well before they spend as much money to get ready for site plan. Um, it's just kind of my thought, let's, you know, be welcoming, if we're going to put that tool out there, let's be prepared. And, you know, very systematically be able to start critiquing them as they come to us with a sketch plan saying, hey, this is our concept, this is what we like to do. Okay, and we're going to start our process right away with the, the sidewalk, the neighborhood meetings. Um, evaluating, you know, street capacity and. Um, that's kind of my thought as to where we're at right now, and maybe we could address the. Percentages later on, particularly if we were to use them in different districts. Um, you know, Port, uh, Saco Island and Portland Road makes perfect sense to me, seventy thirty. But if you want to use it as a tool, as Mr. Gerard brought up for infill, which is another major goal in our comprehensive plan for our downtown. We may need to evaluate, you know, if the whole first floor is commercial use, but there are four floors above it, the seventy thirty rule may not work out. Um, if we're trying to increase infill residential density. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Matt, I know you had your hand up, but I want to turn to Jeff Grossman and I want to turn to Joyce. Um, see if they, what, what their thoughts are on this as we've been, you know, muddling through this. So Jeff, how about you? You, Jeff Grossman, what, what are your thoughts?
Well, this is pretty new to me, so I don't have many thoughts except, you know, a sidewalk, I think would be a good idea.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Joyce, how about you? What are your thoughts on this up to this point?
I, I do like the idea of having a sidewalk early on because I think that would have been helpful, it would have been helpful for us on Bradley Street. Um, and I was thinking when you're talking about the residential development pool, it's sort of like compensatory wetlands. Where somebody fills in wetland someplace and there are other wetlands. Reserved somewhere else. Um, I know that happened with, uh, the Boy Scouts over by the jet port. Um, they filled in wetlands and there were wetlands. Preserved over by the old Humpty Dumpty building in Scarborough for goodness sake, so they weren't even close to each other. Um, my only thought about the seventy thirty, um. I, I, I guess it depends on where we're drawing the districts. Um, I'm just thinking about. How deep some of these lots are going from the Portland Road? And if you're going, you know. Three thousand feet back from Route One. That's not going to be commercial development back there, it's, it's all the, the backlots are going to. Be better used as residential. Um. So either, either drawing the areas carefully or maybe just having the seventy thirty on. Frontage of major roads and then different percentages further back.
All right, thanks, Joyce. Uh, I wish that you got your hand up.
Just quickly, I just spent some more time really going through these pages. Um, I think we're obviously heading in a direction where over fifty percent is going to be non-residential. And we haven't referenced at all how that non-residential will tie back into the comprehensive plan. The free comprehensive plan, to my knowledge, I can't find it anywhere in here, and I think we do need to just. Be careful with what we're, you know, doing with this because I think. You know, the overall spirit in my mind is still that this is encouraging. A mix of uses, a mix of housing, a mix of everything, and I think. Upfront, one of the first stages of this needs to be someone coming to us and saying, here's your comprehensive plan. Here's what your community is outlined for the future of what it wants, and here's how this plan conceptually is going to bring all of these. Variety of uses into your community, and so I think a lot of it upfront needs to be focused on that non-res component.
All right, thanks, Wes. Matt, you had your hand up a while ago, do you still want to say something, bud?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, I, I, I agree with, with a lot of everyone's, with everyone saying here. Um, I'm also a major support. Um. Of the density bonuses, I think that, I think that's a great idea, I've been trying to push that, um, as we were talking through the, the zoning, um, update. It, it needs to be in a, in a fashion, you know, reduced parking, increased green space. Um, renewable energy, you know, a, a lot of those are the, are the big pieces that. That are successful, I see in other towns, um, with the density bonuses, so. Um, reducing impervious area, so I think, I think those are, are good directions that I, I think we should be moving towards.
Thanks, Matt. You know, one, one of the things I'd like to come back to the board, you know, with the time we have left, let's keep in mind, we got about twenty minutes. Um, we're really kind of getting off the subject a little bit, but maybe not. And maybe this is important, uh, more important to talk about. Um. The whole concept. Of master plan developments in my mind has been. To incentivize. The non-residential components of development wherever you want them. With increased density of residential development that's permitted. Right? As evidenced by what we originally did and what has not survived, at least the ordinance revision that went into effect. On the eleventh of this month. Is we were going in the Portland Road District from, I think. Five thousand square feet per dwelling unit to a thousand square feet per dwelling unit. In certain situations. We viewed that probably at the time and in retrospect is probably. Too far, too fast. But the point is, in everything that I've seen about master plan developments. As it came forward from Zores through Planning Board up to the council finally. Um, the idea is to have an incentive for increased residential development. Or to have increased residential development as an incentive to a developer to provide the non-residential component. Sort of of a development. And so I'm interested in hearing from the board members. Uh, because as Bob alluded to, if you don't have. Basically, I think what Bob is saying is if you don't have the incentive for increased residential development as part of an MPD. You're back to ordinary site plan and subdivision review, you know, of a project. You know, on its face, with it, with the, the, the underlying basic, you know, requirements of the ordinance with respect to the number of dwelling units per acre. And so, you know, as a concept. I'd be interested in knowing if planning board members are still interested in. Supporting the concept of. We get MPDs to occur wherever we want them and however they should work, but we get them to occur. As a result of providing the incentive to the developer of having more residential development, uh, dwelling units than you would normally be allowed. Under a conventional development. Is that, you know? Is that a rational assumption? Is that the way we want to go? Is that the approach we want to take?
So Chair Matt here.
Yeah.
I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good tool to, to help incentivize. The residential component, I'm not against that. I do see the master plan development as a tool to ensure that the land. Serve and can handle, you know, uh, particular use. I think that's, uh, being involved in, in other towns and the, through other master, master plan developments. Some have included residential, some have not. Um, but it was more of an exercise to ensure the land can support the intended use. Um, both in, in the current phase and, you know, as, as the project grows and develops. And, and how, like Alyssa mentioned, how it meets the comprehensive ha- plan and how. How it helps the town move forward into the future, not necessarily. With residential, but that can absolutely be a part of it. Um, so it's, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to the residential. Um, using it as that tool and incentivizing it, but. I don't know if I'm a. I don't know if I think it has to. That, that's. That's all. I don't, I don't think you have to, you necessarily. You know, have to have all that residential component as part of the master plan.
No, that's not my concept, Matt, what I was, what I was suggesting is under master plan development. The objective is to get. Non-residential commercial development going. With the incentive that it can be coupled with higher density residential development.
It, right, it could be, but it wouldn't have to be.
What was happening on Bradley Street? In my estimation, as I viewed it. Is. What we had is we had a developer taking advantage under master plan development standards. The increased density for residential development that was permitted. Without providing any significant component of non-residential development that was coupled with that. All right, and so all you had was a super. You know, multi-family residential project that was being proposed. And if that was to occur that way. Out in other areas of the city, particularly in, in the PR district. You know, what I think we would want to do is move forward. By not allowing super. Multi-family residential projects out there and increased, had increased density. Without some component for us, for the city in general. Of non-residential, commercial, retail, whatever development going along with that.
Okay, I, I understand more clearly now what you were saying, I, I thought you were saying the, the requirement of, of. You know, pushing the residential piece, but I, I, I see what you're saying now, okay.
No, yeah.
I, I am in agreement, yes.
The objective would be. Developer, I want you to provide commercial, retail, non-residential development. And the bonus I'll give you is you can couple that with higher density residential development to go with it. There's his incentive, there's his incentive to build.
Yeah, okay, I, that, that's.
Look at the project and say, my incentive is not there, if I'm looking at five thousand square feet per dwelling unit, my incentive is not there. Oh, if you want to talk to me about an MPD. Or I can get my residential development down to two thousand or twenty-five hundred square feet per residential dwelling unit. Oh, now I may be interested. And, and see, I think what, what happened with me along with Mike Eon. Is I became very aware or very conscious of the fact that on Route One. We were number one, opening the entire PR district up to MPD development, and we were doing it down to one thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Okay, and, and while that may have been a great incentive for developers, it may not have been exactly what we wanted. And so, you know, that's why we're taking a step back and looking at that now. But, you know, I haven't lost sight of the compact or the, the, the concept, if you will. That what I'm thinking is, developer, I want you to do this and your incentive to do it is this. Okay, that's, that's. I think what I've been thinking about all this time.
Okay, yeah, that's, I'm, I'm in support of that goal, I mean, I, I'm always in support of incentives. Um, so, yeah.
You got to, but you got to provide, you got to provide the developers something, what's in it for them? You know, it's, you know, we got to consider what's in it for us, but we also got to consider what's in it for them too.
Well, absolutely, yeah, I mean.
What's in it, what's in it for them at this particular point is not necessarily a bad thing for the state. Because if we incentivize them for higher density residential development, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Because we're getting the dwelling units that we saw we need. You know, and, and so it's not a bad thing.
And that's what I was going to interject, the third component is need, if we didn't need it, they wouldn't want to build it. Um, so, you know, we need the, and I think when we start, um. Talking about the percentages, we need to arrive at what we are comfortable as a city to, um. To, to come up with for the percentages.
I think overall, I think. Joyce had an excellent point on page nine of our packet. Subparagraph case, uh. I'm sorry, not K, on page nine, page eight, I. No, it's page nine of our packet. Subparagraph J C. Where it talks about individual master plan developments in the Portland Road District shall be at least seventy percent non-residential. As measured by net area, wow. You know, as, as Joyce indicated, you got a project that goes back a couple thousand feet from Route One. And you're going to require all of that to be seventy percent non-residential, that may be a little bit extreme. You know, back, that, that's, that's probably a little bit extreme.
Um. Read, read, so is it net area or net usable acreage? You know, I mean, that's what you want to be doing because, you know, if you start factoring in the wetlands and in the nonusable acreage, um, open space, that's sort of, I mean. You know, there are a lot of factors to consider and that's, that was, that's easy math that was thrown in and it had no real. Science in it. Um.
Yeah. Well, doesn't it need to be based on the land area or can be based on the proposed building area?
Um. Again, those details weren't ironed out and that's.
Yeah.
If it's going to be based on net residential areas, as Matt implies, that, that could be tough. The other thing too is, you know. I have to seriously question whether or not with the requirement of seventy percent in the PR district. You know, don't be wrong. I'm the first one that would say. We need something in the PR district, we need a component, okay, in the PR district, I don't know what the number is. But seventy percent out there, where is the incentive for the developer to do that? If he's got to provide throughout the whole project seventy percent. Of the, let's say it's, it's net residential, uh, area. Um. That has to be non-residential, where's his incentive to, to build and to do that? Mike, you had your hand up first, I think, I'll get to you, Jeff, bro, shoot in a minute, but go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just to, uh, take five steps back, uh, Saco Island is. Thirty percent commercial, seventy percent residential, just the opposite, it's not the same. So each zone, as I would agree with everybody, if you were going to open up another zone as time went on. All we're trying to do here is to get back to where we were before our original consultants. Didn't do the best of jobs. Before they quit or they were released, and so we're trying to put the two thirty, four sixteen stuff back in because. More than likely, the council is going to open up the Portland Road Zone, and if they do. There's, there's a lot of stuff missing that this has in it that was in two thirty, four sixteen. That's not on the books right now, that's correct, is that not correct, Bob?
Exactly.
Including, including, you know, there's, there's something in there right now. Where Bob came up with a little footnote saying that you could put a sixty-foot building. Twenty feet from a lot line. On Flag Quan Road and some of the other residentials and, and Bob had a, an amendment. That he was going to give to the council a couple weeks ago and all of a sudden the meeting didn't happen because of communication stuff. And so I think. This table, he, him and, uh, Dave Toomey came up with the idea of. The building's fifty feet high, it got to be fifty foot setback, sixty feet high, sixty feet setback and. Not just twenty feet, because that, that was one of my points, so I just, in case I don't get a chance to talk anymore on this. I want to make sure that the council, if they go and put something in. They would at least make Bob's change there and then to be consistent with what we did on table four, one. Basically, we're trying to get. The. If I get this right. That was on four, one, and then on three, three, under master plan developments. The, it's a permitted use in the Portland Road District, whereas. Everything else is pretty much when you get into a master plan development is, uh, is a conditional use like in the. Anything you're going to do on a multi-family, like if you get into medium residential or higher residential and Bob agreed that. Maybe that should be a conditional use, so again, I think the percentages should go from zone to zone, but. All I'm saying is. this proposal here is, can be, everything you guys are talking about, I think are great changes. But doing nothing, what's in force right now is missing an awful lot of stuff. If somebody were to come in and you don't at least do this and then continue to revise, it's just, if you don't do anything. What's in there for master plan development is, is missing quite a bit. And I think Bob would agree with that. So I think if, if it's going to take, Denise needs to be something with master plan development in the next month or two with the council, then you should move to at least get this stuff, which was nothing more than what has been on the books all along. Maybe a little bit something about schools in there that Scarborough and Bitterford has and there's uh, where you'd have to look at those to make sure that that stuff wasn't impacted. But I don't think there's anything new that wasn't in the 2011 ordinance. It's just, uh, as you, as I'm listening to all you people, that are all good points. And is it still weak? Yes. Is it? Is it going to get us by maybe till, till you can make it better? Uh, it's going to make it by, by a lot better than if you do nothing and, and you rely on what, what got adopted, uh, by the council on that just went into effect because that, that piece was just pulled out of the air, if I remember right, right, Bob? Something that was a draft that, that never made any traction way back that Emily had done. And I, I don't know where it came from, but that's, that's what's on the books right now. That's, as long as everybody understands that, uh, and I'm sure you guys will have plenty of time to make it much better, but at a minimum. Before you, before you let the council start master plans out on which they're going to do in my mind, uh, no matter what you decide. You can, you can decide you're going to take six more months to do it. And I'm guessing Denise that it's going to be happening quicker than that. Am I correct?
Um, it, it all depends. And, and I just, in defense of, um, poor Emily is that this wasn't pulled out of the air, like the whole document draft was not pulled out of the air. Okay, it, it was crafted by a couple, three, um, ordinances that exist in other communities around us and in other areas in New Hampshire. So it's not completely that way. I mean, it just, you folks need to make a decision as to how you want to apply it and how to, um, make it much more specific for Saco. That's all.
And I, I didn't want to throw Emily under the bus because I think she did a great job under the pressure that she was in. It's just that, that particular document missed some pieces in it that, that, uh, and I don't know how it happened, however it happened, but. Um, so having said that, I, I just wanted make those points and, you know, I think you all do a great job and anything I can do to help in the future, just let me know. And I'll be glad to try to help out.
Thank you, Mike. I, I, listen, I think we're nearing the end of our time for the workshop this evening, but I, I think, uh, Mike, I think probably to send up what Bob has got now drafted with your help to the council, uh, for their consideration and adoption right now is only doing half the job they expect us to do. Okay? Um, frankly, um, we made a lot of noise about, you know, myself included, and, and I'm gonna, you know, I'm not going to deny that, made a lot of noise about where exactly MPD should go on, on, in the PR district. I don't know. I didn't have a specific suggestion, but I thought it deserved some consideration. I think we need to determine whether or not we want to do MPDs in other districts rather than PR, NSI. You know, in the city. I think that deserves some consideration too. Um, and so given all of that, I think the council was expecting a little bit more from us than just what we've got drafted at this point. Because I can see the questions coming back. Wait a minute, what about this, that, and the other thing? I would like to have this planning board, you know, move to a point where we can try to make, you know, um, some rational recommendations about where they ought to go. The other thing too is, is what we haven't talked about, and we talked about it briefly, but what we haven't resolved yet is whether or not we want or would recommend to the council any differences in the residential density requirements that we're talking about. All right, um, that's something, you know, Mike, you know, uh, you talked about it, you know, a lot about what would happen to the PR district if the entire district was opened up to 1,000 square foot per dwelling unit and MPD developed. Okay? And so we need to do two things. We need to recommend to the council where we think they ought to go. And we need to recommend to the council at what density we believe is appropriate for them to be developed. And I think to send anything up to the council short of doing that is going to be number one disappointing to them. And I think probably risks, you know, them sending, hey, you're sending it back to us and saying, you've only done half the job. You know, you need to give us some more, you know, uh, comprehensive recommendations than what you've done up to this point. You're absolutely right. In that what Bob and you have redrafted into the current proposal is a lot better than what the consultant brought forward for us, you know, at the end of ours into the planning board process last fall. But we're not done. I don't think we're done by any stretch of the imagination. I really don't. And I think for the council, you know, the council is expecting more from us. You know, than we've given them up to this point. And so we need to keep working on it.
Yeah, I think Bob changed that to three and 4,000 square feet, not the 1,000 square feet you're thinking about dawn. Uh, in his.
Well, I didn't see, I didn't see any change to the tables. You know, what Bobby's got before us is, is the application requirements and the review standards. I haven't seen any changes to the tables.
Yeah, that's what I, I mentioned earlier that he had, had that ready to go to the council with those changes I just talked about, those, those two specific changes, a setback and going to three to 4,000 square feet instead of 1,000 out in the Portland Road Zone. And that was just a Band-Aid to start with, but I mean, at least it's in a step in the right direction.
Okay. And, and the, you know, the broader concept again, you know, Bob said it months ago to the council. You know, it's no more appropriate to allow MPDs throughout the PR district than it is to not allow them at all in the PR district. That's our point of saying that, and I agree with him 100%. And, you know, I was not a big fan of MPDs in the PR district years ago. But my recognition today is, listen, they're a, they're a in-your-face, um, appropriate way to go for the city in the future. They are an appropriate way to go even in the PR district, out of the Portland Road. And so all I'm saying is, you know, let's just sit back and I think what the council is expecting from us is what's your best recommendation you can give us as to where they ought to go and at what density? All right, you're right, Mike. We may have already, you know, at least incrementally or at least intermittently worked out the density requirement. I don't think we've talked about yet whether or not we want to do it throughout the district or recommend to the council something different. And I think we just need to keep visiting that issue as we move this forward. All right, members of the board. Any comments or question? I, I think obviously we haven't gotten that far. Well, I can't say we haven't gotten that far this evening. We've done a lot of, we've had a lot of meaningful discussion and it's important. Um, for the next workshop, where do you believe we need to go? I'm looking for recommendations and suggestions.
Chair, this is Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff.
Um, huh, wouldn't it be appropriate where, you know, we've got quite a bit of headway on the master plan development to try to finish it through. Let us see the proposed table changes that you have concerns about. And maybe something as, as simple, and I, I hear a lot of the conversation tonight stemming around densities and, and growth and, you know, the residential bonus, if you will. But I think Ms. Bhutat kind of hit the nail on the head with, you know, it needs to be cohesive with the comprehensive plan. And if we can get some language in there that ties that together, so when the new comprehensive plan comes out, the tool is still in alignment with the vision of where the city is to go. It is very useful. It's kind of my thoughts. Maybe we should just take the workshop to take one more look at this so we can truly make a recommendation of the council, um, as to the changes that they should, should adopt. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Everybody else, any thoughts before we wrap up here?
Well, there's two, two, two weeks until the next meeting, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I, I hope to be able to spend some more time on this. Uh, but, uh, the board would like to see this back on at the May 4th meeting. Is that correct?
My sense is that, I'm going to speak for myself. My sense is that we really need to keep hammering at this. We need to dispose of this. We need to dispense of it. We need to make a recommendation up to the planning, up to the council as soon as we can. Um, they held off implementing anything on the new ordinance until we got this done. Because we promised we were going to do something on this. They tasked us to do it. We ought to follow through with it and get it done as quick as we can. They gave us six months. I think we can do it quicker. I really do. Denise, you had your hand up.
And all I was going to do is to tie into what Jeff's, um, suggested, which is a really good idea to hammer it through, but uh, you have a joint planning board and city council meeting on the 17th that is going to involve training. Um, and I think that's a great opportunity since you're going to have two, um, land use attorneys providing that is we incorporate that as part of the discussion in the training is to have, you know, maybe a half hour dedicated to master plan development while we, we can have that conversation. Um, the other thing is we can commit our staff. I mean, I've, I've, Bob mentioned, you know, um, having that on the fourth agenda, Isabel, Bob and I can uh, work on some research, um, on some, uh, comparable language in some various communities, uh, which I don't think. You know, I think we, we initially, the consultants provided the nucleus of what's, what you had before you. Um, and there was some research language from other communities, but I think we make a deeper, deeper dive in what's out there and have that for a discussion on, on the workshop on the fourth.
Workshop on the fourth. Okay, now, that means that we workshop, workshop this, this again on the fourth. The joint meeting is the 17th. Have you established an agenda for the meeting, on the joint meeting with council on the 17th yet?
I've worked with the two attorneys and they're putting the agenda together. Yes. And you should be having that shortly.
But you're suggesting that we would take like a half an hour in that total agenda for that meeting and talk about this?
If there's time for that, yes, yes. And, and it was one of the mayor's suggestions to have that conversation with both the council and the, uh, planning board. And so it was going to be a topic anyway, but I'm not, you know, what I'm suggesting is that we may have to spend a little bit more time on it than, than originally stated. Or have, at least have an initial discussion and a further conversation. But it was, um, suggested by the attorneys to actually have it at that time because we'd have both boards um, having that conversation and because it deals with policy and direction setting. You know, in density, where do you want these, these, um, MPDs to be?
Now, you know, let me see, I, you know, I'm not trying to, don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to restrict them to certain locations, okay? It's an issue that merits discussion and that's all I'm suggesting. What I would suggest we do, if I may, and I'm interested in hearing from other board members on this. Come the joint meeting on the 17th. I would not wait to approach that meeting with the council from the standpoint of what do you suggest? Okay, I would like to approach the council in that meeting is we've worked on this. We've discussed it and here's what we think you should consider as we move it up to you. Let's get something a little bit more solid, a little bit more concrete. You know, that we can actually put before them for a meaningful half hour discussion if we're going to do that on the 17th. And that way there, you know, we can simply state where we're coming from as planning board and what the council asks questions and feedback to us, you know, from that point, what they, you know, what they think. But I would like to see something fairly concrete, fairly, and you know, in a pretty much finalized state, go up to them, you know, for discussion on the 17th. Fair enough?
Fair, and I anticipate that you would have an agenda for the training session by the fourth of May.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have at least the fourth to work on it again. And the way Bob is, is killing us. We're meeting the fault with me too. And so, um, hopefully with another hour's discussion or two, we can get this pretty well, you know, um, hammered to a fine edge, if we will, and see what we can, we can come up with. It's not going to be perfect. But at least, you know, and I'm repeating myself, I'd rather go to the meeting on the 17th with what, instead of what do you think? It's that, you know, here's what we think ought to happen. You know, and let them, you know, chew on that during that half hour of the meeting. Any other thoughts or questions, folks, before we wrap up? All right. Thank you so much, Mike. Thanks for your input. We appreciate your, your participation as always, you know, and thank you for sitting in.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. All right. With that, we did, uh, we're ready to move into the regular meeting. Um, I'll call the regular meeting of the, of the Saco Planning Board. Uh, this is the Tuesday, April 20th, 2021 meeting. Um, for the record, let's indicate that planning board members present include Jeff Broshu, Matt Provenkle, Joyce Weary Clark, Jeff Grossman, Awa Sabutat, and Andre Raj. So the record will indicate there are six planning board members present, uh, for this evening. Also joining us, Bob Hamblin, the city planner, and Isabel, actually, obviously, the Planning and Economic Development Associate. Um, others who may be sitting in with us this evening maybe, and I don't see them on screen yet, Joe Waverly, the city engineer, but we'll see if that, um, if they come on screen later on as we go through our agenda. And so the first item we have in our regular meeting is the minutes of previous meetings, that being, uh, specifically the meetings of April 13th, 2021. Does anyone have any comments or questions relative to the minutes as presented? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Chair, this is Jeff. I moved to accept the meeting minutes of April 13th, 2021 as drafted.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
This is Joyce. I second.
Joyce seconds, thank you. Without discussion, I'll pull members of the board. Alyssa.
Yes.
Jeff Grossman.
Yes.
Matt.
Abstain. I was abstained.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Sean's not with us. Chair of vote, yes. So the record will indicate the vote is five in favor, one abstention to accept the minutes as presented. Next item we have on our agenda, this is a public hearing for a, a proposed amendment to the Brookside Two subdivision. Identified as lot one on map 90. The applicant is R. Scott Dobson. Property is zoned RC. And our goal this evening obviously is to make a finding of completeness of the application for the subdivision amendments to hold a public hearing and to review the preliminary plan based on the subdivision regulations. Uh, Bob, in, aside from the summary that you provided us in your memo, are there any additional uh, comments, points, questions that you need to provide us with?
Uh, only, I would only bring to the board's attention, um, uh, one individual, a Nathan Jury. Uh, and, uh, I believe a homeowner in the Brookside Two subdivision has provided a, uh, oh, a, a letter of response, if you will, uh, to this proposal. Uh, that included signatures from many of the homeowners throughout the subdivision. Uh, it arrived in our office, uh, this past Friday, uh, which was after the packet was, uh, uh, put on the city's website. Um, so that has been added as an addendum, so to speak. Uh, it is found on the city's website, but separate from the, uh, uh, from the overall packet, uh, that includes the agenda. So members of the public, uh, you can find that, the letter um, from people who live in Brookside Two and, and those listening right now on from Brookside Two, I just want to assure you that, uh, the input provided by Mr. Jury uh, based on, I'm sure many of your shared uh, thoughts on this development and the proposal before the board tonight, um, did make it to the city's website. It's available for public viewing. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bob. And, and it's important to note too that, that, um, the city is obviously making those submittals part of the public record. You know, for consideration of this, um, subdivision amendment this evening.
Yep.
All right, um, on our way to finding the application complete, any members of the planning board find any uh, questions, concerns that, um, that they find need to be resolved before they can move to it, finding the application complete? My sensing there is none. Uh, could I have a motion to find the application complete?
Mr. Chair, this is.
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce, I move that the board find the application for an amendment to the Brookside two subdivision to be complete.
Thank you, Joyce, is there a second?
This is Alyssa, I'll second.
Alyssa's seconds, thank you, discussion of the motion. My sensing there's none, I'll pull members of the board, Alyssa.
Yes.
Jeff Grossman.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broschu.
Yes.
Chair of vote, yes, record will indicate the vote is six oh. Yeah, six oh to accept or to find the application complete. Um, members of the board. Comments, um questions, um issues that you think need to be resolved. Aside from what's already been provided in the packet. And what's available to us.
Well, Mr. Chair, this is Joyce, oh, sorry, Jeff, if you wanna go ahead.
Right, he's deferring to you, Joyce, go ahead.
I I I wondered if now would be an appropriate time for the public hearing to hear from the applicant um and find out if he has any additional thoughts for us or any additional information.
Well, before before opening the public hearing, it may be totally appropriate to turn to the applicant to see if they have any additional information and and thanks for reminding me of that, that's that's probably, you know, what we should do, Jeff, did you have anything different than that, or are you?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that my interpretation was correct, and I think I am, that the the recreational a- area and the parking that we're talking about um was never conveyed to the city, the applicant has retained it and paid taxes on it um the whole time. And and is it, I guess my question is, is the applicant planning on continuing to hold that in private holdings even if this subdivided parcel i- is granted? Or is it going to be conveyed to the city after? If this parcel were were subdivided, is my question, thanks.
All right, Jeff, we'll get that result from the applicant. Any other member, yeah, Alyssa?
Um, I uh had sent an email over to Isabel, just wondering if there was more documentation from this original approval. And I'm not sure if she could chime in and let me know if she has something to share, but I was specifically looking for the findings of fact and conditions of approval from circa ninety-nine, when this was first approved, um.
Yep, um, if you guys would find it appropriate, I I was able to do a little bit of document um documents nagging, I guess, to make the conditions of approval able to be viewed digitally um in a twenty twenty-one version, which I'm happy to share if you'd like.
So my my wondering about this, Dawn, was just that I was curious how the open space was handled in the approval. Since it really wasn't clear in the the plan set we had in our packet, as far as what the intent was with that.
Understand. So can you share that with us, Isabel, so that we can, we still wish that has the opportunity and the rest of the board has the opportunity to look at that?
Oh, sorry, I just realized my camera wasn't really on me, um, so this is the um approval letter from May twenty-sixth of nineteen ninety-nine from a previous city planner. Um, and this was the final subdivision approval for this, and the only reference specific to open space in here um is in regards to uh oh, here, creating um a homeowners association to manage the designated open space areas.
Okay, so Isabel, if you don't mind me reading that, so that says, correct, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant shall provide for the creation of a homeowners association to own and manage all designated open space areas in the event the city of Saco or a land trust refuses to accept ownership. Okay, that clears up my question about what was the intent of that in the approval in ninety-nine.
And uh, Mr. Chairman, uh Bob here.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
I I would see clarification both from the applicant and perhaps also from um current residents of Brookside two, as to whether a homeowners association exists or was created. Um and I guess at this point, I would uh just observe that the city of Saco has not refused to accept ownership. Uh, I would say rather that the city of Saco uh fully anticipated accepting ownership. Uh, and if we read uh input from the city attorney, it would be uh his understanding that in fact, the o- the open space is owned by the city of Saco today.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, and and I and I should, uh at the same time, I should recognize that if one were to um investigate the vision software that some may be familiar with, uh maintained by the by the city's assessing office. Uh, can you look up uh this particular map and lot number um for for the open space within the subdivision? And uh does does that show as being owned by uh Mr. Scott Dobson, uh yes, it does. So one admittedly, um we're at cross purposes here a bit. Um, so the, again, the city attorney, I believe, would tell you that the open space is owned by the city, that it came along with acceptance of uh the streets in the subdivision, um but at the same time, the assessors office has that open space owned by Mr. Dobson.
Thank you, Bob. Alyssa, does that uh answer your question?
Uh, yes, it does, and I agree with Bob that I I would love to hear the applicant and, you know, anyone else that would like to speak to this, that topic throughout, you know, the next few minutes or meeting.
All right, so what's, for the time being, turn to the applicant and see if she can, uh Jamie Crane? Are you here for the applicant this evening?
Yeah, so he is here on the phone, um I just don't know how to put him in. Um, he does plan on gifting the land back to Saco um for this application, I didn't know if you could put him in through his phone?
Um, yep, do you happen to know the area code or the phone number?
It's two oh seven, do you mind, Scott, it's gonna go everywhere?
No, that's okay, there there's only two phone numbers and I just.
Okay, perfect. It's six five zero is the first.
So you'll have to, um, I believe it's star nine to participate.
Okay.
Be able to do so if he's.
I think he could be on.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
We can.
Hello?
Yes, we can.
There, okay. I'm sorry for the confusion, but for some reason I cannot get into your Zoom, which I do Zoom meetings with my computer. I am down in uh sunny uh Ave Maria, Florida right now for the winter, so um, anyway, we've got to with the phone, and I've been listening to you, but um what we would like to do, lot twenty-four was originally approved and all the development was approved in the original development when Rich Rodner was the planner. And what happened was there was a confusion with my engineer and the city's engineer at DeLuca Hoffman, Mike DeLuca. And we ended up having a problem with an oversize of the detention pond back at the corner of Bruno, so we in a fast fix, changed the detention, enlarged a detention bond on lot twenty-four. And made that into open space rather than a house lot and dug a hole there for a detention pond. But uh when the meeting was amended to do that, they asked me at that time, the planning board, if I intended to come back in the future and relocate lot twenty-four, and I said, yes, I do plan to do that. But as life goes on and business goes on, we never got back to that. Now it's seventy-five, seventy-one with Parkinson's and a few other problems in life. It's time to get this cleaned up, and I would like to get this one lot relocated, and then I would like to give the land, the balance of my land, which might be around fourteen acres to the city and get it over with. And um also my rights to do this amendment. Um, people, uh Brian Costello, when we subdivided the development and he was interested in buying his lot in the back there from us. He uh required that we make a multi-page uh deed restriction, which is recorded in the registry, York County Registry of Deeds. Um, and I think the recording is, uh I can give you that real quick, but um uh, let's see.
It shouldn't be a package that they have.
Yeah, there, well, anyway, it's in the registry of deeds, and you should have a copy of that, but if you go to page uh seven of the deed restrictions, which means these deeds restrictions were put on by my attorney, Jonathan Goldberg, on every lot as they were sold. Now, whether the homeowners saw them or not, that's their, uh, they were recorded at York County Registry of Deeds. In there, it gave basically says on page seven that we had retained the right to amend the subdivision as long as we own property in the subdivision. And that included right of ways to uh utilities and everything else. I don't wanna get into all that detail, but it's in there for, should be in your package for review, and I'm sure we gave it to you. And so this is what we're here for, we're just, we want to relocate that lot and uh get it over with and clean up the the uh, so I don't have to leave this to my heirs to deal with someday. And I've already beat the COVID this year, so I don't have to wear the mask for the meeting either. Anything else?
No comments, questions, members of the board? Alyssa?
Um, I'm, I guess I'm looking for clarification because the the approval that Isabel was just showing us and the plan in front of me, so the approval references a grand total of, what was it, thirty-seven lots, correct? And all thirty-seven have been built already?
No, there's no lot twenty-four built. And I think yeah, thirty-seven was the total originally, but lot twenty-four was converted to a detention pond. So there is no lot twenty-four in the subdivision as was originally designed and approved. So this is an approved lot originally, lot twenty-four was, in a different location. My deed restrictions allow me to amend the subdivision to relocate lots or anything else. That was put in place, Mr. Murphy knows about all that, he was involved in all the the dealings with Jonathan Goldberg, my attorney at the time. And the the lot, uh as far as the, though I gave the one point five acres for the recreation field to the town, I retain ownership of all the other lands at that time until this is done.
Other members of the board, comments, questions for the applicant? That being the case at this point, it may be appropriate to open the public hearing and hear if there are any members of the public who have any input. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
To chair, this is Jeff, I'd like to move to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
This is Joyce, I second.
Joyce seconds. Without discussion, I'll pull members of the board, Jeff Broschu.
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Chair of vote, yes, record will indicate the vote is six oh to open the public hearing. Um, Isabel? Who's lined up and who do we have first?
Yep, I will just quickly go through my public hearing spiel. Um, in order to participate in the public hearing as an attendee, you'll just have to use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen or star nine if you're calling in from a cellphone, um, once we have hands raised, we will recognize you to speak. Um, and I I don't have anyone with their hands raised at this time. Oh, um, I do see a Nathan jury, I'm going to recognize them, Nathan, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
We can.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the planning board, uh my name is Nathan Jury, I live at twenty-one Sofia Road, which is in the Brookside two development. Uh, I think a lot of the points that wanted to be made, uh both on behalf of myself and also other members of the uh Brookside two subdivision are contained in the letter that we sent in, uh which I would really encourage uh the board to take a look at. Uh, not only with the letter, but there was also some attachments that were sent. And I think a little bit of background is is really relevant, starting with the original approval that was requested. Uh, Mr. Dobson's original request back in nineteen ninety-nine included thirty-nine lots. And lot thirty-eight and thirty-nine were located directly next to lot thirty-seven. And uh those were, as can be seen on the uh plan, struck out, and they were deleted as part of the uh master plan. And instead became open space that abuts the uh open field that is used as a baseball field. Mr. Dobson is now requesting to relocate lot twenty-four to what was the original lot thirty-eight, uh which was denied and struck out of the plan. As indicated in the document that was reviewed just before the uh public hearing opened, it looks as though Mr. Dobson uh was supposed to give that land back to the city, and in fact, the city believes that it was given back uh to them, and so he would not have a right to build uh on that land. Uh, Mr. Dobson said that this was an issue that came up, and he just has not gotten around to asking that the lot lot be relocated, uh but that doesn't appear to be the case, uh in one of the attachments I sent. He actually proposed that nine additional lots be added to uh the Bruno Circle subdivision in uh two thousand two, uh so that was way back in two thousand two. And there's a letter uh in two thousand six uh from another attorney discussing a request for an additional lot in the Brookside two subdivision uh that was also denied. So this is uh three times uh Mr. Dobson has already asked permission to build in this location. And three times uh that has been uh denied. And I think that there was some hope that with turnover and city personnel and uh due to the passage of time, that people might not remember uh some of these things that had occurred. Uh, in addition uh to those uh issues, um there are several zoning concerns, uh in particular, uh the Brookside two uh subdivision is one that is fed by private well water and is not public water. Uh, even though the houses are uh close together and there's already thirty-six homes here. Uh, so residents have significant concerns over uh water quality and or quantity, depending on if an additional well is put in, uh I believe that Mr. Dobson as wanting to further this development would actually have to put in public water uh at his expense if he wants to continue to build. There's also concerns about whether or not there's adequate frontage for the lot that's been uh proposed, as well as whether or not that would interfere with the use of the field that's currently there in the parking lot. Uh, there's supposed to be a twenty-six car parking lot currently there. Um, I think you could probably fit twenty-six smart cars there, I'm not sure you could fit twenty-six regular sized cars uh the way it is right now, uh and certainly if you added even more uh space or took away more space from that, I don't think you'd be able to have uh the parking there. It claims that there's a sixty-five foot uh frontage to that lot, uh which is essentially half of all the other lots in the subdivision. Uh, the other subdivision lots have a hundred and twenty feet of frontage, and uh I went out and looked at the the site. And if you measure sixty-five feet from the abutters uh mailbox and and walk around, it kinda lands you dead in the middle of that parking lot, so I'm not really sh- clear on uh that the frontage is is entirely accurate based on uh the picture that's been uh pro- provided by uh Mr. Dobson. I know that uh I know that, uh, the city parks and rec has expressed concern over the ability to use and access, uh, the Bruno Field, uh, that's there. Um, and I know the city is the one that's actually been, uh, taking care of, uh, the field and access to the field, uh, which includes, uh, supposedly a land that, uh, Mr. Dobson owns. Uh, but again, I, I believe that, that belongs to the city. There's also concerns about wetlands. Uh, it's a very wet area, uh, back there. And there's a brook that runs not too far from, uh, where Mr. Dobson, uh, proposes to build. Uh, that's why it's aptly named Brookside Two, uh, Development, uh, because there's a brook that runs right through there. I'm not sure that uh, he meets the hundred-foot, uh, stream buffer requirement. There's also concerns about, um, as far back as he wants to build, uh, because it's a dead end road. So I think there's issues, uh, with that as well. Uh, so, uh, for all these reasons, uh, both myself and all of the people that signed the letter, I believe there was, uh, forty-one total signatures, which represents twenty-seven out of the thirty-six uh, properties in, in the Brookside Two, uh, subdivision are, are opposed to this. And I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you, sir. Isabel, do we have anybody else lined up?
Um, yeah, the next person that has their hand raised is identified as Brian Costello. Brian, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hey, this is Brian Costello from ten Bruno Circle. I was actually the original person that came in as development. Bob and I were way back from this development. I think you remember that, Bob, all the things that went on. Um, I lived in Brookside One and ended up moving back here when, uh, Dobson started clearing all the lot. And, uh, there was originally ten of us, just to give you a understanding of the project. Ten of us signed a contract with Dobson to build. Out of the ten, there was only five of us left over. Uh, we, hardship that we end up enduring with this property was incredible. We moved six times trying to get into this house. Um, Bob can attest, this was not an easy project. The road went in three times. Um, the, the town, the city actually, Don, you might remember this, but the city actually went to call in a note back in two thousand and four, because nothing was being done. Uh, we had our actual, uh, letter carrier stop, postage stop. We had nobody plowing the streets. It was not dwell. But going back to this whole thing with thirty-eight, thirty-nine, that was definitely taken away and it was called open space. Um, when we saw that Dobson's name was still on it, we assured it's still open space. It was going to be always open space and nobody could ever build it here again. So when I saw this come through, I was really shocked, I should say, is that we're continuing on with this whole thing. So um, as far as me with the deed, I have no idea what Dobson's talking about there. I really don't. Um, we never did have a homeowners association. By the time this thing got going, um, the town finally took it over and, uh, we never formed a homeowner association. I don't think there was a need for it by that time. But, uh, the process has been long. It started in ninety-nine. And I thought we were all done by now. So I guess I'm kind of surprised we're here where we are. Um, if anybody has any questions for me, I'm, I'm here.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Isabel?
No, I don't have anyone else with their hands raised at this time.
Can I respond to some of those questions, those things?
You said we can, Mr. Dobson. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, those additional lots that we proposed were proposed in the original development. They were not proposed at a later date as that, I'm not sure where the confusion goes there, but we never proposed, we originally proposed to go completely out into the ball field area. We weren't giving ball fields originally. And we wanted to build houses all the way out there. There was plans that were drawn that way. But, uh, in the, the issue being reaching the end of the road, the end of the cul-de-sac was as far as we could go, uh, at that time, although you've changed some of the rules, which allowed the lots to go into the back onto the, off of my cul-de-sacs when I built there. But anyway, back to, uh, this additional lot there, this sixty-five foot of frontage, that is your legal requirement on a cul-de-sac for frontage, in case nobody knew that. And, uh, they can check that in your codes. At least it was when we did the original development, that there only had to be sixty-five feet of frontage on a cul-de-sac uh, for each house on it. And that's why there was originally houses designed all the way around that. As to Brian's, uh, having gone in and amended the subdivision in the past, he needs to look at the, um, the, uh, rules that were, were set in the deed restrictions when we sold each lot set in ninety-nine. It required my approval for any amendments, still does, for any amendments to the subdivision. Also, if you put trailers or anything else, those were banned, I think, and all the things in the, in that. So there are some rules that is not, I have not been enforcing, but I figured the neighbors were going to probably keep track of themselves and take care of those things. But, um, and as to the wetlands, we have nine and some acres of wetlands in the project. And that's still nine because lot twenty-four just is being relocated and is basically created lot twenty-four into wetlands. Um, you know, pretty much, I think it's a straightforward, uh, lot for lot is what it is. And that's what we intended, to, uh, clean this up and get rid of the rest of the land of the city. And I told the planning board when we approved lot twenty-four again, as a detention pond, that they asked me what I wanted to do about the lot. And I said I would relocate it someday in the future on my remaining land, of which I've been paying the tax bill on forever and a day since I've owned it. So I don't know, uh, I think those are as best as I could quickly answer the questions as I heard them, but anyway. Oh, and about the water in the wells. We drilled, uh, a ton of the wells in most of the houses that are there. And all those wells yielded, um, high amounts of water. Uh, I know the city manager was one of our residents and his well, I think, was over forty gallons a minute up front there. And I think most of the wells came in at thirty to forty gallons a minute. We have city sewer all the way back. There's a sewer manhole in the middle of the cul-de-sac. So there is no worrying about water quality as far as sewer getting into the water. It should never happen. Uh, those sewers were all camera run and inspected by the city back when we finished the project, as was all the other stuff. So, um, as far as that goes, the water should be fine. There should not be a problem drilling a well on this lot. It's basically, I built the house to thirty-seven for the Paquettes. It's basically the same concept as there. Be do a daylight basement type, uh, house. I'm not going to build it. I'm, I'm not in, uh, I've retired from most of that. I am strictly looking at, uh, selling a lot to a builder and that. As to, um, taking utilities around or anything else, we looked at, um, at the time, uh, with London running some lines under, under without having to, uh, through the streets, but um, those are up to, you know, what goes on with the develop, with the builder.
All right, thank you, sir. Isabel, do we have anybody else lined up, public hearing?
Yeah, the next person with their hands raised is identified as Robert Warren. Robert, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, thank you, members of, of the board. Um, Robert Warren, I'm at, uh, six Bruno Circle. Uh, but I don't have all the history per se that, uh, Mr. Costello and I would say even Mr. Jury has. Um, we bought in about two thousand and fourteen. Um, we bought in the area because we understood it to be fully developed, right? So we, we sort of bought into the package, I would almost say. And I appreciate that Mr. Dobson is coming forth and saying, hey, I'd like to rejigger it. Um, but it's, it's been nearly twenty years, right? And, and I would say even the well, let's just start off with the well issue itself. Um, the world has changed even in the last twenty years, right? Uh, many people, I would say, even in the neighborhood have, um, have even thrown on irrigation into, um, into the mix, right? And it's becoming warmer. So to say that, like, the water table that was, uh, twenty years ago, uh, is the same as today, I would argue that probably is not the case. Um, a- and, and second, I do walk out there. I walk the baseball field actually every day. Um, because I have a dog that's very energetic and, uh, we go out through some trails back there. And there is, there is a stream that I don't understand, and I've gone out and looked myself personally. I don't understand how you can fit a house in there and not completely disrupt a stream or not have water in a basement or vice versa, I guess. Um, I, I, I don't know how you'd squeeze it in, to be quite frank. And I think Mr. Jury was being quite generous when he said twenty-six smart cars. Um, I think if you put a driveway in there, um, you're, there's going to be no place to park for the people that, um, the community members that actually do use the baseball field. Um, I know the Little League team is, is it, luckily, they're not parked around the circle and, uh, you know, obstructing, uh, traffic first, perhaps. Um, there is a, there is a small spar, uh, part, uh, parking lot to park in. But I do believe that if, if you put in a house in there, like, there's, there's going to be no, there's going to be no, uh, place to actually park and you're going to have then, uh, traffic and cars parked all around, uh, up and down the street, which, you know, I would argue is perhaps a safety concern. Um, so, yeah, I, I mean, just to be very clear, I'm, I'm quite against, um, again, putting in a house here. I, I feel like, you know, the, the development was closed a good twenty years-ish ago, so I'm not sure why we're reopening, um, this issue. So I think that's all I have to say there. Thank you.
All right. Sure, go ahead, Mr. Dobson.
Okay, the lot that we've designed, lot twenty-four, does not touch any of the land that's in the parking lot. We, we designed it to be outside of what was given to the city. All that land still belongs to me, where that parking lot is. There's additional land that the city would, uh, acquire there that they could do as they want within that area.
All right, thanks. Anyone else in the public hearing, Isabel?
Yep, the next person on my list is just identified as Mike. Mike, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, uh, my name's Mike Maddox. Um, I actually live on Isabella Lane. Um, and I just wanted to talk about the, um, well water. Uh, I moved here, uh, when the house was brand new, two thousand and three. And my well produces one point five gallons per minute. Um, it's always been that way. So as far as, you know, wells that are producing thirty or fifty gallons per minute, that's interesting, but mine only does one point five. Um, and as far as the parking lot size back on Bruno Circle, it, yeah, if you could fit ten cars, that would be generous. Um, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next person on my list is identified as Nicole Staples. Nicole, you'll just have to unmute yourself. Um, I see that you're unmuted, but we can't hear you yet.
Can you hear me? Brian, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, sorry, I'm not he- hearing you for whatever reason. Um, thank you so much. My name is Nicole Staples and I'm at eighteen Sofia Road. And I am one of the, um, residents here who signed the letter that Nate Jury wrote. And I just, I don't have a lot of the history that others have already shared, but I just wanted to state that I also have some major issues with the idea of putting in another house lot to a neighborhood that is mature, has been the way it has been for twenty years. We have a neighborhood that is well established. And again, like Robert Warren said, you know, we bought into this neighborhood for that reason. We have young children who play in the front yards and in the streets. Uh, and the idea of it now turning into, you know, a major construction site and taking away some of the land that we have all had established here, uh, I'm not a fan of. And I just wanted to come on and also say that I'm another resident in the neighborhood who has concerns and who would like to have our neighborhood stay the way it is. It's been established for a long time. It's mature and we've all been here for a long time. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Um, I actually don't have anyone else on my list at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Jeff. Broschew?
Um, I don't, I just wanted to, I would be remiss if I didn't speak up that there were a couple of hands that went up as Jeff was making his motion.
All right, let's hold off. Jeff, if we, if you will.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I'd like to retract my motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead, Isabel.
Sorry about that, just because we can't see them with their physical hands raised in person.
That's okay. That's okay, I understand.
The next person that I saw was Catherine Goulet. Catherine, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name is Catherine Goulet and I live at twelve Sofia Road. Um, and again, at, like, a few others, I don't have the history in the neighborhood. Um, but I do have concerns about Dobson's proposal. Um, concerns about where the house would be placed and the proximity to the wetlands. I agree with Mr. Jury around the concerns about, uh, the environmental concerns about that. Um, I'm also very concerned about the parking lot spacing. There is absolutely no way to get twenty-six parking spaces in there, as Dobson had promised the city he would do. Um, and I, I just want to confirm that the items that Mr. Jury has pointed out, um, we wholeheartedly support the opposition of Dobson, um, placing another house lot. Although he may have paid his taxes, he did not uphold the full agreement that he made with the city. And that's my rebuttal.
Thank you very much. Another, another person waiting to speak, Isabel?
Yeah, the, there's two more, both of which have already spoken. Um, Nathan Jury is the next on my list.
All right, we'll hear from Nathan one more time.
Nathan, you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, for, uh, taking me. I just real quick wanted to, uh, point out a couple of things in response to what Mr. Dobson said. If you look at, uh, the, uh, agenda from the planning board meeting back on October twenty-second, two thousand and two, uh, which is one of the things I attached to my letter that I sent in, uh, very clearly states as an agenda item, he's trying to add nine lots to, uh, Bruno Circle, which is the same area where he's trying to add this lot now. So the statement that, you know, he hasn't tried to relocate this lot for twenty years just isn't true. Uh, there's another letter, June twenty-three, two thousand and six, uh, from attorney Natalie Burns at Jensen Beard, uh, talking about, ask, addressed to Bob Hamlin, asking him about an opinion concerning a new lot proposed to be created in the Brookside Two subdivision. So again, I don't know why, uh, we'd be talking about that if there wasn't a discussion about it previously. And the language, I have no idea what Mr. Dobson's referring to when he talks about, uh, the language in the restrictive covenants about, um, being able to just change things whenever he wants. It doesn't say that. But in fact, it actually, uh, references, uh, the master plan that was approved by the city, uh, back in nineteen ninety-nine. If you look at the restrictive covenants, uh, that actually incorporates that by reference. And so myself and every other homeowner that's come in here since has relied on that master plan that was approved by the city back in nineteen ninety-nine when purchasing property. Uh, I actually called the city when I bought my home in two thousand and twelve and asked, because I went on the city's website and saw that property, said it was still owned by Scott Dobson. And I asked what the deal with that was and if anybody could ever build back there. And I was assured that, no, nobody could build back there because that was open space as shown on the plan that was approved back in nineteen ninety-nine. And myself and others in the subdivision relied on that assurance that no further building would be done in purchasing our home.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
May I respond, you know, just shortly?
Hang on, hang on, Mr. Dobson. I think, Isabel, you had one more, other person?
Yep, the next person on my list is, uh, Brian Costello.
One more time, Mr. Costello.
Uh, thank you, thank you once again. Uh, the only question I have for the city is, um, I know Scott mentions that he was told or assured that twenty-four, if they took away twenty-four, he was going to be able to be giving another house lot there. I don't remember in all the meetings we had and all the open meetings we had and all the time we had that ever officially said or anywhere said that he was able to relocate twenty-four. I don't, I, all the paperwork I, I can't find it. I don't know where this comes from. Um, I know there was, when the discussion was that they had to put in another retention pond. Um, I know they had to take that twenty-four out to put the retention pond, but I never remember with Rob, uh, Ron Klein, with Bob, with anybody from the city ever mentioned that they're gonna, or, uh, Tim Murphy ever mentioned that this lot was gonna be relocated someday. Um, that's my only question. Where is that? That's it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Dobson, one last time, briefly if you will.
Alright, that's it. Uh, as far as the planning board, it was after the meeting, the question was asked of me. Other than that, it was not at part of the recorded meeting, but they knew I was always intending. And Mr. Murphy knew that and has long known that. When we did the, the, uh, final, uh, um, deeding of the roads and everything else, that's the reason I didn't deed any other property until I could relocate the lot twenty-four. Also, as far as, uh, the attorney there's question, if he would look at the deed restriction in book nine eight oh one, page two thirty-nine, it's the recorded deed restrictions that were placed on every lot owner's lot by my attorney and my signature. And the date received in York County Registry of Deed was December one of, uh, ninety-nine, I believe it was. Yeah, nineteen ninety-nine. So that's where we're at. And then like Mr. Murphy said in his letter, we, uh, we have the right to, uh, amend the subdivision.
Alright, thank you, sir. Isabel, if you don't have anyone else lined up, I think it's appropriate, as Jeff tried to do a couple of minutes ago, is close a public hearing. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. Um, I'd like to make a motion, but I also see that there's a participant that has a hand raised. And I don't know if we want to give Isabel a chance to tell us if that person has already spoken.
Is there a new person, Isabel, or is it somebody? I haven't seen that, but is there a new person or somebody different?
Um, it's identified as Nicole Staples and I'm not sure if this was from before. Um, Nicole, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
We can.
Uh, Nicole, Nicole's voice just got a little deeper. Uh, now, this is, uh, this is her husband, Brian Staples. Uh, eighteen Sophia Road in Saco. Um, you know, we, we've been in this neighborhood for ten years. We used to drive through this neighborhood on our lunch break. Um, and eat our sandwiches from what used to be Hillview Market and Deli and dream of being in this neighborhood. It was established, lots of families, just a beautiful spot. And, um, we were lucky enough to get in to this neighborhood and we made purchase decisions, uh, based on certain expectations that it was, was a mature neighborhood that things were complete and this is how it's gonna be. Um, I do share the concerns brought forth by my neighbors thus far and I did sign the letter, um, that Nathan Jury submitted. Um, I wanted to share an additional detail that I feel like is really, really important. Because like, like all of you, you know, the purchase of our home is one of our, you know, most major investments that we make in our life. And, uh, on two occasions over the ten years since I've, uh, owned this house with Nicole, um, my neighbors have reached out, my next door neighbors have reached out and asked about our well water. Because our neighbor right next door, um, their well went dry. And so they, they were getting basically a reading on their well that said, oh, there's not enough water here. So they would run out of water. Now, we, we've always had, we've always known, we, you know, ideally I would be on city water if we could. But because our water flow rate has never been strong, we don't get that awesome nice shower that everybody dreams of and wants. Um, so it was really concerning when my next door neighbor, uh, called and said, hey, are you having issues with your well because ours is going, going dry? It's very slow, it's stopping, we can't get water. So I, just the idea of opening up the neighborhood after, and, and I, I, I don't want to say subdivision. Let's talk about opening up the homes, opening up the neighborhood. Put, everybody put yourself in our shoes here where there's real concerns about water. Um, and how that's impacted and Robert Warren was, was right, things have changed over the last twenty years. Um, you know, we have put in irrigation systems, there's lots of them. Everybody has pride of ownership in this neighborhood. And we all thought it was done. And with the fact that you have some neighbors right next door to me that, where their wells are already going dry, it's upsetting. Um, to hear that we might be just adding more within this neighborhood that we thought was closed and put to bed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, Isabel, if there's no one else waiting to be heard?
Uh, no, there is no one else at this time.
Alright, then, motion, yeah.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
This is Alyssa's second.
Alyssa's second, thank Alyssa. Without discussion, I'll call members of the board, Joyce.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jeff Brochu?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Back, we'll indicate the vote as six, or close a public hearing. Back to the board, let me see if I can remind, well, let me see, as, as I'm listening to all of this. Uh, the first point I want to make is, this is number one. An amendment to the subdivision plan that was originally approved. Um, and specifically, this would be the planning board approving a change to the open space that was previously approved by the planning board for this subdivision. Um, you need to recognize that, um, the originally approved open space, if I'm not mistaken, and Bob will correct me if I'm wrong, was twelve point seven two acres. And the portion of the project requiring open space, or the open space required for the project was seven point three two acres. And so there is residual open space available to Mr. Dobson to reduce the amount of open space and create another lot over what was previously approved by the planning board. Second issue we need to deal with, and I think Bob will bear me out on this, under the subdivision standards, we would be approving another lot which is not serviced by public water as is the standard requirement for subdivision, uh, in, in our subdivision standards. The, I think the third issue that we're dealing with is we would be approving another lot on a dead end road that's already in excess of a thousand feet. Now, if I'm not mistaken, Bob, and correct me if I'm wrong, number one, uh, the planning board would have the ability to, one, modify the open space as required by the applicant. Two, we would have the ability to approve another lot that's not serviced uh, by public water uh, under the subdivision standards. And three, we would have the ability to approve, um, another lot on a road that is in excess of a thousand feet dead end. Uh, so correct me if I'm wrong, if you will, on any of those points.
Uh, yeah, you know, uh, I, I regret the situation, Mr. Chairman, but there is a, uh, an email from the city attorney that, that did not make it into your packets. Uh, and that's, I mean, always to be regretted. I am, apologize for this. Uh, it was dated, uh, this past Thursday, uh, the fifteenth. And, uh, this is the, the third of three emails that Tim Murphy has provided, um, regarding this proposal. Now, this was precipitated and, you know, this is gonna take a few minutes because I absolutely think it's important enough to read into the record. Um, I, as acting as the city planner, posed four questions to the city attorney and, uh, he replied. And, uh, again, this is, um, about five paragraphs and yes, the board will bear with me. Um, I'll just read this uh, to you and this will, uh, hereby become part of the public record. Uh, first, as to question A, the open space is dedicated as part of the original plan approval. I always wondered why Mr. Dobson insisted on retaining fee title to some of the open space, but at the time was not troubled by his insistence about it. Uh, Tim goes on, what matters, what matters is that all the open space shown on the plan is bound by the approval. Meaning all of it has been dedicated as open space. Developers often will offer more than they might be expressly required to donate as a means of getting more favorable review. That is a choice they are free to make. And it appears that is what Mr. Dobson did. So it's not like Saco got seven point three two acres back in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand and Mr. Dobson controls the rest. All twelve point seven two acres have been dedicated and are controlled by the city as part of the plan approval. So it is my opinion at this very moment, Mr. Dobson, though he holds fee title, has no right to develop point four two acres of that open space because it's dedicated open space. Removal from the dedication requires planning board review and approval. And ultimately may also require council review and approval as it technically is a transfer of city land interests. Uh, Tim, Tim Sykes Charter, section one dot zero two. Uh, that, that's the bulk of it, but there are a couple more short paragraphs here. Uh, as for question B, and let me just read question B. Is Mr. Dobson in violation of section ten point two point five of the subdivision regulations, which states that open space shall either be deeded to the city or to another agency or land trust or otherwise protected via covenants or other legal arrangements to guarantee status in perpetuity? Tim's response to that. As for question B, the answer is technically yes, the open space should have been deeded. I, I asked. Uh, but Mr. Dobson refused for his own reasons. At the time, the city had other priorities in terms of its time, attention and resources. Uh, the third of four questions that I posed to Mr. Murphy, see also section ten dot two. No structures, drainage or detention facilities or paved areas shall be permitted in open space. This statement alone raises questions about the developer's ability to propose a building in the approved open space. Tim's response. As for question C, if the planning board waives the dedication as to the requested point four two acres, I could, I could interpret that as a waiver of section ten dot two. So there is, is an opening there for Mr. Dobson. Final question. If the board decides to allow the proposed lot to be established as proposed, it is clear that a condition of approval could be that the remainder of the open space shall be deeded to the city prior to, for example, a building permit being issued for the lot. If however, the proposed law is denied, does the city have recourse to force the issue of the open space uh, finally being conveyed to the city? Tim's response, as for question B, the question does not as practical matter require fee title since it has full control of all the open space via the dedication slash plan approval. No party can use or occupy the open space without city review and approval, which is de facto ownership of sorts. If Mr. Dobson wants to keep paying taxes on that open space, well, that's his choice as well. Um, that's the end of, uh, Mr. Murphy's letter. Again, my apologies, it did not make its way into the packet. I feel that it's probably the most critical of the three emails that Tim, um, sent our way regarding this proposal. Um, so, uh, Mr. Chair, if I could also, um, and this might be construed as perhaps a bit of guidance, uh, from staff to the board. Uh, this is subject to both preliminary and final review. Um, at this point, so it's a guarantee that the board will see this, uh, matter at least one more time. Uh, as the board is aware, um, there is a memo from the city engineer in the packets wherein, uh, Joe LaVaria raises a half dozen questions. Uh, there is a memo from Ryan Summer from Parks and Rec Department, uh, where he voices concerns about, uh, a lot, um, uh, being inserted where proposed and its potential impact on the parking for the ball field. Um, there are the, the points that Tim Murphy has made that the board could reasonably, um, ask the applicant to respond to. Does the, does the applicant agree with the points that Mr. Murphy has made or does he not? And if he does not, could he provide his own line of reasoning? So, um, point being, um, if and when the board decides, uh, uh, that we've accomplished, uh, what the board thinks is accomplishable this evening, um, there are certain things that ought to be requested of the applicant and, uh, I would suggest we should be looking for responses to those, uh, prior to seeing Mr. Dobson a second time.
Can I have just one second?
No, you cannot, sir. The public hearing is, hang on. The public hearing is closing. I want to hear from, well, I want to hear from the board about their, their concerns and questions. Jeff Brochu, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my kind of thought process was kind of like a pendulum as I worked through this packet. Um, you know, at first I was a little bit taken that the recreational area was, you know, privately held and the, the developer was still paying property taxes on it, which kind of led me to the subdivision regulations. Um, six dot eight dot two, which clearly stated when a park, playground or other recreational area shall have been shown on the plan, approval of the plan shall not constitute an acceptance by the city of such areas. The planning board shall require the plan to be endorsed with appropriate notes to this effect. Um, looking on the plan, I didn't see that, but it kind of made sense that he owned the parcel. Then I looked at page thirty-six of our packet, which had, um, the Brookside Two Declaration of Protective Covenants and Common Elements. Um, paragraph A made it pretty clear to me that the developer, as long as he owned a parcel, had rights to relocate parcels, change their sizes, um, layouts and locations. Um, so it kind of made me swing the sense that the developer had um, some lateral ability to do that because of these protective covenants. Um, then as I continued to, to read on, um, you know, about the open space, it brought me to, um, subdivision regulations ten dot two, uh, which is the retention of open spaces and preservation of natural or historic features and provisions for recreational areas and facilities. Um, near the end of that paragraph, it says, "The open space shall be shown on the recorded subdivision plan with the appropriate notation that it shall not be used for future building lots and shall not be further subdivided." So that kind of brought me pretty square back to saying, oh, well, you know, the covenants and declarations say that he could, he had the right to do that, but we're being kind of trumped by the subdivision regulation saying that it cannot be subdivided in the future, which I think kind of ties into the correspondence that Mr. Murphy wrote in, um, that Mr. Hamlin just read into the, um, the, uh, additional records. Um, and when I looked at the site plan that was signed in May of ninety-nine on page fifty-three of our packet, um, that clearly is all um, demarc, noted as twelve point seven two acres of recreational area and that was the approved plan. So once we have that approved plan by the planning board and then we bring in ten dot two, um, I don't think we have the lateral ability to take a, a parcel out of that. Um, and then, um, with some of the supporting documents that Alyssa requested and, um, uh, were presented tonight, apparently either finding a fact or condition of approval number six states that he, there was supposed to be an HOA formed to look after the maintenance of that, um, recreation area. Um, so it feels like, you know, the applicant didn't follow one of his conditions of approval. And then we can't necessarily grant that additional lot because it's coming from um, an approved, s- signed subdivision plan that was marked as open spaces and ten dot two prohibits our ability to do that. Um, so that's kind of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Other members of the board, Alyssa.
Um, thank you, Jeff. I was right there with you with my notes as well on the majority. the majority of what you just said, with the exception that I am of the belief that the declaration of covenants and common easements that, um, were created, uh, which is book ninety eight oh one, page two thirty two, are referencing the plan that was approved, which includes the findings of tax and conditions of approval, which by no stretch of the imagination, you know, left anyone to believe that that open space would ever be privately owned by one individual, let alone still the developer. So that, although that document that you referenced shows that the, the declarant will have some rights until he relinquishes all of his ownership of the lots. That document was created with the understanding that he would never have ownership of that open space because the approval was based on the fact that either an HOA or if not, a land trust or the city would have ownership and it was never going to be one individual, you know, and certainly not the developer. Um, so, and then I'm just referencing Tim's emails, um, the plan did account for a lot twenty four, but it was in a specific location. That location was no longer an option. End of story on lot twenty four. Um, and then to Natalie's email, you know, there's, there, there's been years and years and years of ownership transfer. And the plan and the findings from nineteen ninety nine are the legal backbone of what has been purchased through the years. And these owners have always had the understanding that that open space was dedicated on the plan in a very specific area and that, like you're referencing in the subdivision, that was not going to be a spot for future development. Um, the plan does reference to fifty foot right of ways, which are clearly there for potential future expansion and other parcels. So there always was the understanding, you know, the owner should have understood that that right of way point in two different locations is potential future expansion, but certainly they would have never been led to believe that the open space could be future expansion. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Other members of the board.
Matt here.
Matt.
Um, yeah, I, I, I'm on the same page as Jeff and Alyssa here. Um, another question, Bob. C one, isn't the street frontage two hundred feet? Isn't sixty five falling short? Yeah, so that's, that's sure. I also on the plan submitted, I also see lot twenty four. So while I understand, I think the intent was a, a, a house lot um, for twenty four, I, I, I still see lot twenty four on the, on the plan here. So it, it looks like there's an extra lot being proposed. Not a relocation of lot twenty four. Lot twenty four is just, um, now part of, you know, the stormwater. So um, a- and then in addition to conditions, uh, of the previous approval not being that. Um, you know, I, I have all those same concerns. I guess another question is, um, uh, on one end of Bruno's circle, the ball field, and we clearly have a cul-de-sac built. And then on the opposite end, there isn't a cul-de-sac built. Um, more of a, a T-turn, a hammerhead. So um, trying to understand that component as well. So um, also looking at some, you know, street images here, trying to understand uh, how obviously well water, that's definitely a concern, understanding, uh, grading, how grading is, um, in this area is going to affect not only the stream, ball field neighbors. Um, so those are my additional concerns.
Alright, thanks, Matt. Alyssa, back to you.
I'll let, you know, the others who haven't spoken, uh, jump in too, but to Matt's point about the site itself and the well and all of the things that the neighbors brought up, that to me is really irrelevant because this could be the most perfect building lot of all time. You know, this perfect building area of all time, but at the end of the day, it's clear that the plan and the approval from ninety nine did not give the developer continued rights to this area for future buildable lots. So it seems to me that it's irrelevant, you know, the quality of the land itself because it point, you know, it should not be developed, period.
Alright, so let's turn to Joyce. Yes, good.
Yeah, no, I think, I think Alyssa hit the nail on the head right, right there, that we have a recorded plan that provides for twelve point seven two acres of open space. Um, and we have lot twenty four, which was dedicated to drainage. You can't substitute the drainage for open space. The open space has been provided for, it's not supposed to be built on, and it should have been deeded to another entity long ago. Um, I think the fact that, uh, the covenants, uh, provide for relocation or redrawing of lots, um, was trumped by the actual recorded plan.
Alright, thank you, Joyce. Jeff Grossman, how about you? You got any thoughts on this, my friend?
Um, just that there are a number of issues and questions that were brought up. And, uh, I'd like to see those questions um, and issues reduced to writing and have the applicant respond to them as well as the city staff. Including, um, the question is, as to whether further development would impact uh, the existing wells of the existing lots.
Alright, thank you, Jeff. Uh, just to remind the board, and I, and I think, just to be clear on all sides of the issue. Um, as Bob indicated in Tim Murphy's email that he read to us um, a few minutes ago. Uh, I think what we need to do is, and you know, Alyssa and Joyce, Jeff, you're exactly on point when you say that the developer, Mr. Dobson, the owner, cannot do or propose any development on the open space that was approved as part of the plan back in nineteen ninety nine or two thousand and two, whenever the final approval came. But what we're dealing with here is we're dealing with a requested amendment to the subdivision plan. And so we have to recognize that. Mr. Dobson does have, and you know, as far as I can determine, does have the ability to request the planning board to amend the plan that was approved in nineteen ninety nine to provide for a western amount of open space that was originally dedicated. And in that regard, to allow him to fit in another building lot. And just in fairness to the applicant, I only point this out because I believe that's essentially what we're dealing with. There is no question. You know, as Jeff, you pointed out, Alyssa, you pointed out Joyce too. He could not do anything on any part of that open space, the way that plan exists on the face of the earth today and as the way it's recorded, you know, in the registry of deeds. He does have the ability to request the planning board to alter that approved plan. You know, to something that's different. And so I just want to make that point. Uh, and, and that's why I said before, um, if Mr. Dobson was already at the threshold of the amount of open space that the project required, uh, we would not even be talking to him at this point. But, but the point is, you know, his requirement for open space is well below what was originally approved in the plan. And therefore, uh, we, in all fairness to him, we have to recognize that he has the ability, you know, to request back a piece of that if the planning board approves. And so that's the issue before us. The issue before us is whether or not we want to approve amendment to the subdivision plan, reducing the open space that's dedicated and providing him the opportunity to, to establish another building lot. And so I just want, I think, you know, I, I need to make that clear just so that we understand, you know, we're all clear on the issue. Anyone else? Any thoughts or comments?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff.
I guess I'm struggling a little bit. I, I appreciate your effort to clarify. Um, but I'm struggling a little bit if we were to, you know, to, to agree or to find that he is not, you know, he failed to meet a condition of the original approval in ninety nine by forming a HOA to oversee this recreational land. That would essentially mean that he wouldn't have right title and interest to request the subdivision because he was supposed to do that as a condition of approval back in ninety nine. So that there was a, a maintenance and, or an organizational body that was overseeing this. And that means he's basically still violating another subdivision standard. Um, in article ten, ten dot two dot five, about having that entity in place. So really, he's holding on to land that by subdivision standards and the conditions of approval, he doesn't, shouldn't have right title and interest to, is my question at this point.
Now a concern, now a concern, Jeff, thank you. Alyssa.
I'm just echoing what Jeff just said. That is still a sticking point with me. I'm, I'm struggling to find that he has right title and interest to that open space. Um, so I, you know, for that reason, I really can't see a way for this to move forward as an amendment.
Okay. Is the board ahead of even consideration of preliminary subdivision approval? Is the board inclined to need more information to move ahead? Or do you feel you all have what you need, you know, to make the decision you need to?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yep.
I guess it would be, my thought would be, you know, do we consider going through some of these items that, you know, we bulleted and, and vote on them to create our findings. And that way we can possibly have a motion to make a decision as to which way we want to go on the overall issue.
Which bulleted item would you suggest first, Jeff?
Um, I moved that this, I moved to form the finding that this subdivision plan would be in violation of subdivision regulation ten point two if a parcel were to be removed from the recreational area.
Alright, do I have a second to that motion? Motion fails for lack of a second. Alternatively, anybody have a direction?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Joyce. I, I, I would like clarification on the issue of, of the minimum frontage requirement. If we were considering, uh, allowing an amendment to the subdivision, um, the new lot would have to be, if I'm not mistaken, in compliance with current zoning, not zoning that was in existence back when the subdivision was initial, was initially approved. So I'd like to have, I'd like to have information, um, to inform us as to whether the proposed lot would meet the requirements of a legal lot today.
If I'm not mistaken, Joyce, you know, Matt was correct in that the minimum frontage in C one is, is, is typically two hundred feet. But I think as Mr. Dobson pointed out, on a cul-de-sac, you are allowed to scrunch up, you know, those frontages. And I know Bob's looking at that right now. I can tell he's looking for the appropriate, you know, portion of the ordinance that, that says that.
And, and, uh, board members, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, uh, Brookside two was an interesting subdivision in many ways. Uh, one was the, the front portion of the overall acreage. Uh, what, a- at the time was in the R one D zoning district. Uh, much smaller, much smaller lot sizes. I think the, uh, the signed subdivision plan sheet, uh, echoes this. Um, but then, um, the, uh, the subdivision was actually divided into R one D up front, C one out back. Well, at the time, you could do a clustered subdivision in the C one zone, uh, even without both public water and public sewer. Uh, and Mr. Dobson absolutely did propose a clustered subdivision outback. Uh, so those, that frontage requirement of two hundred feet was reduced. I don't have the plan in front of me. I can't, you tell, can't tell you what it was reduced to, but is well below a hundred feet. Uh, excuse me, well below two hundred feet. And the minimum lot size, uh, was reduced significantly down from eighty thousand square feet ordinarily required down to, gosh, in the vicinity of a ha- half acre, uh, or twenty thousand square foot lots. So just be aware of that. Uh, yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, um, in, in terms of the cul-de-sac, um, quick and easy is the old ordinance that just, uh, was retired. But this is going to ring a bell with some of you, uh, when a lot, uh, and this is a a footnote from, um, table four twelve, lot map, uh, excuse me, lot and yard dimensions. Uh, where, where a lot runs on a cul-de-sac, these minimums shall be measured at the front yard setback line. Now, the trick is to find if that footnote made, made its way over into the new ordinance as well, and I will keep looking.
Bob, you have the old ordinance in front of you right now?
I do.
Um, Jeff, what was the section you just referenced in that motion that failed?
Um, Alyssa, I was starting with, um, section ten dot two, just titled retention of open spaces, preservation of natural or historic features.
Okay. Bob, do you have the language of ten dot two dot five?
Uh, let me see, I've got the ordinance. What, what Jeff is citing there is subdivision regulations. And let me see.
Maybe Jeff, you even, you might have the old copy in front of you, right?
Yes, I do.
What does ten two five say? Regarding?
Ten two five says, with the agreement of the planning board and the city council, the developer may dedicate the open space and or recreation area and facilities to the city for the use of all its citizens or to another governmental agency. Um, agency or recognized land stewardship organization willing and able to manage the land permanently. If common open space is not dedicated to public use, it shall be protected by legal arrangements satisfactory to the planning board, sufficient to assure its maintenance and preservation for whatever purposes it was intended. Covenants or other legal arrangements submitted with, uh, final plan shall specify ownership of the open space. Method of maintenance, taxes and insurance. Compulsory membership and compulsory assignment provisions. Guarantees that any association formed to own and maintain open space will not be dissolved without the consent of the planning board. And any other specification deemed necessary by the planning board. The developer shall maintain control of common green spaces and facilities and be responsible for their maintenance until dedication or transfer to the permanent controlling entity and or until development sufficient to support the association has taken place. The dedication agreement and or association bylaws shall speci- uh, shall specify at what point maintenance is taken over by the association. All maintenance is the responsibility of the developer until that time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Members of the board. Suggested directions here?
Um, Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I mean, I, I think we all are, are having our particular issues. That we want to either have clarified or, or feel like prohibits some of this. Um, my attempt was to try to create our findings so that if we want to, um, have a, a final motion, we have some, some basis for the grounds of why we made those findings. And that was my attempt with my first motion. So, um, I guess I would just encourage if there are other board members that have particular items that are unsettling to them, maybe they could make a motion of a finding and that way we could work through the process to um, form our decision and conclusion of law.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Bob.
Yeah.
I, I would just remind the board, uh, that, um,
There are outstanding issues identified by city engineer, by the Parks and Rec Director. That there are points that Tim Murphy has made that. City attorney has made that essentially. Make further consideration of this practically a moot point. I think Tim is arguing that. A new lot cannot be created out of open space that has been owned by the city since the. Plan was recorded. So I I might suggest that the board ask for responses to staff comments. That a response be provided to the city attorney's points. If indeed the applicant has one. And that until that new information is provided that further review is tabled. That's a thought.
Members of the board.
Yeah, this is Joyce. I think that's an excellent idea. I'm not sure if this is all something that the applicant could do. Tonight, or if it makes sense to have him. Compile responses to. The staff comments and the city attorney's comments and and submit them to us for further review.
Somebody ready to make a motion? Let's move forward. Let's do something.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion that. We table this issue to provide the applicant with the opportunity to provide. Written responses to staff comments and the city attorney's comments regarding this. Proposed amendment.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there a second?
A second.
Jeff Grossman, was that you?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Discussion, members of the board. Jeff Broschew.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I guess I'm just kind of having a hard time there. In my opinion, there's some very big. Issues that even with the reply of the applicant. It sounds like the city attorney's. Kind of taking the notion that the city owns the parcel. He doesn't have right title and interest to even bring it before us. So are we just kind of delaying the inevitable? Or is your intent of the motion to allow legal counsel to kind of? You know, duke it out and determine who actually owns the parcel. Before we try to address the subdivision amendment.
I think reasonable minds might disagree on whether the city currently owns the parcel. Because. Mister Dobson, the deed is still in Mister Dobson's name, and he's still paying taxes on it. So I'm I'm sure his legal counsel has a. A different opinion than Mister Murphy does.
As I would, I mean, thinking he's paying taxes on it. He's not just giving a gift to the city. But at the same token, the condition of approval from the ninety nine approval. Showed that he was supposed to create a body to maintain this, and he failed to comply with that condition of approval. Even though he's been paying the taxes, which then leads us into these other violations of the, you know, breaches of the subdivision ordinance. Which is where I just kind of have a hard time. Carrying it on after that. I mean, he he never fulfilled the original condition of approval number six.
But to Joyce's point, I I think Jeff, you know, does all of that. You know, prequoth. You know, Mister Dobson's. Claim to any title. And any rights in the property forever and ever. And and you know, Tim. Has established, as Bob summarized, and as you you just explained. That clearly the city has all right title and interest in the property and no one else has. And why are we even considering this? Well. I think as Joyce sense and my senses that too is is, you know, in all fairness to the applicant. You know, if he has legal counsel who's willing to refute that. You know, and to argue against that, then that's totally appropriate. And we should afford him the opportunity to do that. Because, you know, as Bob read into the records. You know, we really didn't have an opportunity during the public hearing for anyone to refute that. And there's been no submittal to us prior, you know, to our meeting tonight, you know, on the other side of that position. And so I'm gonna support Joyce's motion because I think it's appropriate to do that. I think it's appropriate. To allow the applicant the opportunity. You know, to argue this point, you know. Further. If he chooses to do that. Anyone else discussing the motion?
Yeah, and I think given the fact that the city attorney's opinion arrived late enough that it had to be read into the record, that it wasn't even part of the written. Submissions, I mean, to to be fair to any applicant. They they need to be afforded an opportunity to have that reviewed by their legal counsel and not. Not on the fly during the meeting.
Agreed. Anyone else, members of the board?
Yeah, Mister Chair, Matt here.
Yeah, Matt.
I I'm trying to understand as well. So so to Jeff's point there and and to Joyce and your opinion there. Question still remains on right title and interest to it and. Regardless of it, or if the applicant does have right title and interest. There's still. And I agree with Jeff here, there's this. Component of conditions of approval have not been met. If conditions of approval had been met. Then we would. You know, that that we'd be in a different scenario here. So I'm trying to wrap my head around. You know. Chicken and the egg here.
Even if the conditions of approval have not been met. The question remains and has to remain from a legal standpoint. What is the applicant's right title or interest in the property, if any remains? All right. There may have been violations of the conditions of approval and, you know, by the planning board originally. But, you know, from a, I'm repeating myself, from a legal standpoint. What does that do to the applicant? And so I don't have that answer. I don't think any of us do. I'm not willing to decide at this point if, you know, if he's precluded forever. You know, from having any claim. You know, to that property and what to do with it in the future. Other discussion by members of the board. On the motion, it's a very important motion. Alyssa, you have any thoughts on this?
Ah, I feel that I'm erring on the side that Jeff's on, which is that it's gonna take. You know, significant amount of new information for me to change how I feel about it. But at the same point in time, I. To Joyce's point, I think the applicant should be able to have another shot at bringing us new information and more. You know, vantage points of this that we haven't considered yet. So I'm fine with the motion to table.
Jeff Grossman, how about you? What are your thoughts?
I think just like I previously said, I think that there's a number of issues. Need to be debated and I think. You know, give the applicant a chance to respond as well as the staff. And go from there.
All right, thank you, Jeff. If there's no further discussion by members of the board, then I'll pull the board members on the motion. Given the motion is the table. Without repeating exactly what Joyce has said. As she proposed, and so I'll pull members of the board. Alyssa.
Yes.
Jeff Broschew.
No.
Jeff Grossman.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chair will vote yes, rec will indicate the vote is five one to table for further consideration. All right, members of the board, why don't we take, it's been. A long, almost three hours. Let's take a a brief recess and come back because we can. Five, ten minutes. All right, looks like we're getting basically everybody back. That being the case. Call a meeting to order again. The next item we have on our agenda, this is a public hearing. For a chapter eighty one recommendation on the sale of city-owned property. Property is located at five oh nine Buxton Road. It's identified as lot nine on map one twenty three. And our goal, obviously, this evening is to review. And provide a recommendation to the city council regarding whether or not to sell the property in question. So Bob, turning to you, any additional information? Or comments you'd like to add to what already has been presented by staff? In your memo.
I would observe only, Mister Chairman, that I had a devil of a time getting. As many city departments to respond to this one as as the board had seen in the past. I think we got responses from three different departments. Whether I asked late on a Friday afternoon or not, I don't know, but. A few departments have weighed in beyond that. Nope, everything that the board. Needs to know that staff is aware of, that's been provided by by the various departments that have weighed in. Is in the packet and there's nothing more to add.
All right, thank you, Bob. Members of the board. Concerns, questions regarding the property in question, the recommendation we need to make to the council, anyone? Jeff.
Mister Chair, thank you. I was wondering, maybe, you know, the city engineer looks like he's still on. I didn't see the the review from Public Works Department. Just a little little curious if they feel like there could be some value, not the whole parcel. But in some. Roadway access, you know, and and probably not in the ten year window, but maybe in the fifteen year window. For some sort of, you know, street improvements there. Should they? We have a recommendation to dispose of the parcel, but to retain some additional buffer there for. Traffic control devices or or an intersection.
I take it, Jeff. Joe, if you're if you're there with us and you're just spinning and you can hear us. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, actually, Jeff, your point is, I thought Pat did comment back. To planning, and that was one of the things we had talked about was. Not necessarily for the whole parcel, but at least maybe preserving some additional right of way width for in the event that any other improvements. Need to be done at the intersection sometime down the road, who knows when. So I I agree with your. I thought our comments back were not necessarily about having concerns about the. Sale of the property. In total, or, you know, most of it, but to retain some for future widening possibilities.
Joe, if I can, you know, I I dropped down into into. Street view on Google today. And I've been out there several times recently. Buxton Road is already improved with a left turn. Wayne onto the old Buxton Road. I know, are you concerned? Or are your concerns basically with further improvements on the Buxton Road or on the Grant Road?
On just on Grant, you know, in the event that we ever had to do something with a widening of Grant Road for either turn lane coming out of. Grant Road onto Buxton Road.
Like a left turn lane or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
I mean, it's just that if we if we have it now, if we give it away someday, we may want it. And so that's all that that's all we were really thinking about. I I'm not thinking that there's a huge likelihood that that's certainly not in my lifetime, but who knows? Somebody might might want it someday, so.
From a practical standpoint, Joe, what was the concept between you and Pat? About the width. That might be required or should be set aside and. How long? There's a lot of frontage on Grant Road. How long? A frontage would be, you know, practical, you know, for an easement or whatever.
Well, I mean, usually the turn lanes, by time you add the taper and the length of a lane, I mean, you're probably gonna be three hundred feet. You know, maybe four hundred feet back, and it's probably, again, you're really only talking about. Maybe it's another twenty five feet or something like that of of real estate. It's not a huge, you know, taking or or withholding of that property, say.
Okay. Other members of the board. Jeff, back to you.
I guess, you know, Mister LaVera, would there be any consideration, you know, particularly at the corner? As volume increases and, you know, some designers like, you know, rotaries. That wet area, I think that corner tends to be a little bit wet. There's some, you know, wet vegetation in there. With that. You know, would would you, would you need additional space possibly because of that wet areas to kind of fill in and create more wetland? Or would it be a no touch zone, in your opinion, knowing that area?
Well, definitely is wet. You know, it's just. Haven't haven't really looked at it deaf in terms of like what would be the improvement there, what's possible. I mean, usually. You know, on the roads, if you're doing widening, even if you're into impacting the wetlands, your square footage usually isn't a huge amount if it comes down to that. So obviously, if you were trying to put a roundabout in there, I know you mentioned that. I mean, if you're doing that, it would be a much bigger. Area right in the intersection that would have to be withheld. I don't think we were necessarily thinking. Roundabout, but not saying that wouldn't be the solution someday. I'm just saying we were just thinking more of adding the ability to add another turn lane. As it came on to Buxton Road.
So, Joe, would it be appropriate? For the planning board. To either specify dimensions or to recommend to the council. That the land be be disposed of except for retention. Of an appropriate. Amount of land as. As determined as depicted by Public Works Department. For future use.
Uh, yeah, I think that would be, from my perspective, I think that's fine. We certainly could work up some dimensions that goes if that's, you know, the direction that the city wants to pursue. I think that was really. All we were commenting on was that we thought, you know, potentially withholding some of it for the ability to do improvements at the intersection. And we didn't offer anything up for a footprint size, but we can certainly do that. Or if you wanna. Make the motion as you said, then that's fine. And if the council wants to move forward with that, we can determine that.
You know, I guess my point, Joe, is I wouldn't be inclined to engineer it for you. You know, and I think it's more appropriate for you to do that. And so. Think it might be appropriate for the planning board, if we're inclined to do that, to just recognize. That that might be an appropriate thing to do. And to leave it to you as it moves up to council to engineer. You know, what the sliver is that that we want to retain, or at least have easement rights to, or whatever. Any other thoughts by members of the board? No one else? Any thoughts, any questions, comments? Anyone prepared to make a motion?
Mister Chair, this is Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff Broschew, yes.
I move the planning board recommend to the city council that the property identified as tax map. One twenty three lot nine. Be considered for sale by the city. For the following reasons. That. That we. Well. I guess I have to regroup on that one.
Okay.
I mean, there's no connectivity. For trails, there's very little value for a future city. Property. The the department heads have weighed in that they don't see any value, you know, fire department location, you know, nobody's weighed in. And the only recommendation that we would request is that they consult with Public Works for a long, long range. Traffic planning and possibly retaining some additional right of way space.
This is Joyce, I'll second.
Was that a motion? I'm not sure there was a motion, Jeff. Was it a motion?
Sure it was.
It was. I feel bad for Isabel trying to type that one up, but. I I think essentially, yeah, it was. I mean, citing that, you know, the department heads have seen no interest. We don't see any particular interest from a planning board point of view. Other than we would really like them to consult with the Public Works Department for long, long range planning and how much land should be retained. For future traffic measures.
Good. Absolutely good. Joyce, is that a second?
It is. I think you did a great job, Jeff. I I just add, yeah, the topography of the land doesn't seem to lend itself to. Other uses that the city might have.
Okay. Motion has been made in second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there further discussion of the motion? Then I'll pull members of the board. Alissa?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. So the record will indicate the vote is six oh. Alright. All items should be that simple, shouldn't they? Alright, last item we have on our agenda. This is a public hearing. Oh, God, we didn't have a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, it wasn't in our, it wasn't in our packet.
It was. It says, it says in our agenda, public hearing. Bob, can you advise us on that? We were supposed to have a public hearing on this, weren't we?
I, first, I'm going to turn to Isabel and and I guess simply ask, does it appear anybody's? Waiting in the audience to participate in that item?
Well, there is a couple of people here, so I can't, I don't want to guess what they're here for.
Okay.
That was a screw up on my part. I'm sorry, folks. What we should do is, we should probably have a motion to reconsider.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I move to reconsider the five oh nine Buxton Road, chapter eighty-one review.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
This is Joyce, I second.
Joyce seconds? Alright. Without discussion, I'll pull members of the board. Alissa?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
The chair vote, yes. The record will indicate the board has voted six oh to reconsider the item. And I apologize to the board for that. I should have caught that. Jeff? Yeah.
This is Jeff. I move to open the public hearing for the chapter eighty-one review of five oh nine Buxton Road.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
This is Alyssa, I'll second.
Alyssa's seconds. Thank you, Alyssa. Without discussion, I'll pull members of the boards. Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt? Yeah.
Might answer your question. According to Wikipedia, Joyce is a city.
Excuse me a second.
My name, I'm sorry.
What's funny is apparently you were telling them about me, so.
Every time I say Alyssa. She thinks I'm saying Alexa. I apologize for that. Alright, I'm pulling members of the board. Jeff and Alyssa and Joyce and Matt have voted. Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. So the record will indicate vote is six oh. Public hearing is open now. Isabel, do we have any members of the public waiting to speak?
If there is anyone here who would like to speak on this item, just use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen and you'll be recognized. And I'll just give people a moment. Okay, well, now I feel a little bit bad for, but you guys go back through it.
No, no, you did the right thing. You did the right thing, Isabel. Absolutely, you did the right thing. Alright, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Alyssa's seconds, yeah. All members of the board, Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Jeff? Broshu?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Record will indicate the vote is six oh to close the public hearing. Back to the table and the board.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yep.
I move the planning board. Send a recommendation to the city council. To sell the property at five oh nine Buxton Road. Tax map, one, two, three, lot number nine. As the planning board. Did not see any notification from the department heads of value for the city for future development. Nor connectivity for trail systems. Due to the location and topography. But would recommend that the council. Consults with the Public Works Department. To retain extra space. For traffic right of way for a long term. Traffic. Improvements, intersection improvements.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
This is Joyce, I'll second.
Joyce, seconds. Thank you, Joyce. Discussion of the motion? I sent him then, I'll pull members of the board. Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Record will indicate vote is six oh. Thank you again, people, and I apologize once again for not doing my job better. Catching that we needed to have a public hearing there. Alright, that brings us to the last. Item we have on our agenda. This is a public hearing. For preliminary subdivision review for Watson Mill Estates. Identified as lot nine on map one eighteen. This is a proposed four lot residential subdivision on Watson Mill Road. The applicant is Home Innovations LLC. And the property is zoned RC. Our goal, first of all, is to make a finding of an application complete, but the application is complete. To then hold a public hearing and review and decide if we want to approve preliminarily the subdivision. Bob, any additional information, comments that you want to add to what's already been presented for the pack?
I have nothing new to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bob. Well, members of the board, initially, any questions, comments, concerns? None? Yeah, Jeff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I had. Some preliminary notes. I didn't see a request for a waiver. For utilities. If it's going through as a subdivision, all utilities are supposed to be underground and the plan denotes that all four lots are served. From existing utility poles, aerial drops. I did have kind of similar question as to. You know, there's a future right of way that's leading to a back parcel, which apparently is going to be. Given or transferred to a family member. That is still up in the air. Is it going to be developed? And if that's the case. Should we be requesting that the driveways be accessing that new? What would be the, the right of way to the back parcel? Particularly if it's to be a subdivision to minimize the number of cur- driveways or curb cuts onto the Watson Mill Road. Kind of my two first thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Other members of the board?
Mr. Chair, Matt here.
Yeah, Matt.
I shared the same thoughts that Jeff had initially.
Yeah, I, I do too. My initial thought was because there is a right of way dedicated to the parcel remaining to the rear. That Watts two and three. Should have curb cuts onto that right of way. And not on to, directly on to Watson Mill Road. Simply for the same reason that Jeff, you know, stated that it is simply a method of. Minimizing the number of curb cuts. We have coming out on that road, which is something we should always strive to do, no matter what. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Joyce?
Mr. Chair, I, I had a question about. Historic or archaeological resources. I know that the applicant had mentioned. Essentially, there are no structures here, so there must be nothing of historic significance, but that. Doesn't necessarily follow that there's no historic or archaeological significance. Just because there aren't any buildings. So I'm, I'm wondering about. Whether, whether the applicant should be reaching out to the main historic preservation commission, just to make sure that this isn't. You know, of, of some historic significance that we're not aware of.
Alright, Joyce, thank you. Other members of the board? Let's turn to the applicant then. Who is representing the applicant this evening?
My name's Dana Libby from Corner Post Lands of Ang. Hopefully, I can address some of these questions here. First, the utility question. We're not constructing, not proposing any roadways. The utility poles are. Pretty much lined up right in front of the lots as they stand now. There may be an underground electric drop from the pole or overhead. But the pole for us. The pole is a power pole between lots one and two. Which isn't locate. If, would you like me to screen share?
You can.
Okay.
That would be helpful to us, you know?
At this point, it's, it's disabled at this point.
I just gave you permission. You should be able to now.
Okay, thank you. Everybody see the screen?
We can't.
Okay, so there's a utility pole right here between lots one and two. That would serve utilities to both the first two houses. There is a utility pole. Here at lot three. And here at lot four. So it, it really doesn't make much sense to go underground. Require an underground utility when they can either do overhead or underground from these poles.
Mr. Webby, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Looking at the plan. C four looks like a pole that's partially into. The proposed right of way that you're dedicating to the back parcel. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just wanted, just wanted to make that clear.
Yep. So this fifty foot right of way, or the fifty foot strip. Will access the remainder piece out back here and the owner. Jason Labonte is planning on conveying this to his parents. So this will be their driveway to, to get to their, their new home.
So.
Go ahead.
So will pole C four have to be moved anyway?
The drive, no, I don't believe it would be. The driveway could access off to one side of it.
Okay.
I mean, all of these driveways. Exceed the minimum site distance requirements. That's why we've, we've maintained these driveways to Watson Mill Road. And at some point, I know, I noticed Jason is listening in, so if he wants to. Chime in as to his reasoning for that, we'll let him do that as well.
To Joyce's points about, well, her point about. The potential historic significance of the property. Has any inquiry been made of the main historic planning committee, commission?
No, no, no inquiry has been made. This property has been a cornfield for a hundred years plus. If there had been anything of historical significance, it's been destroyed. I mean, the wood, this, this wood line continues back. This whole area is cornfield.
Okay, other members of the board, questions for the applicant? I can't see you, so you'll have to. While with screen sharing, I can't see you, so you'll have to, you know, speak up if you want to be recognized.
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce.
Joyce, yes.
Jeff Broshu had mentioned possibility of shared driveways for lots one and two. Is Watson Mill Road, maybe this is a question for Bob also, is Watson Mill Road one of the arteries that? We're trying to limit the number of curb cuts on?
Joyce, I don't, no, I do not believe it is. I checked that list. As part of my review of this application and while several of the more rural. Roads in Saco are on the list, Watson Mill Road is not.
So, Mr. Chairman and Board, if you please, Jason Labonte here, I'm the applicant and also the winner. So, the, the parcel in the back, we're not planning on developing that. My parents, I'm gonna be moving them over there. They want to have a horse. So that is the primary reason why we bought the land in the back. And we're just splitting off a few lots in the front to take the burden of the land cost that I had to pay for to get them that large piece of property. So the, the fifty foot strip of land is just to serve, you know, probably a fourteen foot wide dri- you know, driveway, that is it. We don't plan on doing any future development. They're gonna live there the remaining of their lives. Who knows what we'll do later down the road. Personally, I would rather not have. Lots two and three being shared with them. Primary concern, I live on a shared driveway. You know, it's always a hindrance depending on who your neighbor is and trying to share cost and being able to do what you want to do. I don't want to put that burden on my parents. Watson Mills Road is not required to have any shared driveways. It's a very, it's a very rural area right there. And not to mention, it doesn't really, it's not like a shortcut. So when you go to Watson Mills Road, you could be out there for half an hour, you're lucky to see one car. So, you know, it connects over to. Burnham Road. Back over towards Heathrow and Holmes Road. But if you try to cut across, it's actually a longer distance than actually taking McKenney Road. So that's why there's hardly any traffic out there. So I don't see a need of trying to share driveways. I don't ever see a need that road will ever have any amount of traffic on it. Just because of the way it connects to the other roads and it's actually a longer route than any other roads that you could take to shorten up distances.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I wasn't talking about two and three sharing a driveway with your parents. I was talking about one and two sharing a driveway.
And same thing, I mean, we've run into, so I mean, I built sixty houses a year and. The worst thing you want to do is have a, a shared driveway with two people. If they can't agree, they're never going to be able to break the tie. You know, so I always find that whenever we're doing subdivisions or HOAs or shared road maintenance agreements, the more houses, the better. Because neighborhoods can get clicky, this person sides with that person. You know, so it's never really a fair. Situation. So I think in, on this particular road, you know, I agree in certain other roads are pretty busy. You know, I would definitely try to share the driveways, but I think on this particular road, I think the better advantage would to keep them separate. People have their own control over their own driveways. They're not going to be fighting with their neighbor on who's going to maintain it.
Anyone else have any concerns, questions, members of the board for the applicant?
Chair Matt here.
Yeah, Matt.
Real quick. Does the creation of the, of four lots require a, an HOA? Are we? Did we, is that? Something required, Bob?
It, it, in fact, homeowners associations are largely voluntary, whether it's four lots or forty lots. There's nothing in the city's regulations, whether the subdivision ordinance or elsewhere, that actually requires a homeowners association.
In particular. In, in this particular case, not sharing any common spaces. It would, it would seem logical that there wouldn't be an HOA. You'd certainly want to do that, obviously, if it was common space shared, but. Doesn't appear to be here.
Yeah, we actually eliminated, originally, we went to, we wanted to do a fire system. Talked to Dave Pendleton. He really wanted to see the fire sprinklers. So after having some, you know, multiple discussions with Dave and what's the best way to go about all this. It does work out really well where we're doing sprinklers in the houses and not doing a fire tank. That you don't have that maintenance, you don't have the common space, so it did eliminate having to have an HOA. Because that was really the only reason we would have had to establish one. So by eliminating the fire tank and doing sprinklers, we eliminated the HOA and it kept it very clean.
I, I just wanted to add, Mr. Chair, if there's going to be a curb cut for that. That rear parcel, that should be shown as well on the plans. That should be clear, if that's part of this work.
Other than the, are you talking about Matt, other than the fifty foot right of way itself? There should be some indication.
Yeah, it seemed that the applicant was talking about a fourteen foot wide driveway or whatnot, so if that. You know, if we're talking about that now, then. I, I think it's appropriate that it's part of the application.
It saved me having to get a road opening permit. It saved me having to get a road opening permit.
We, yeah, we initially had a curb cut there because of the, the sister, and so we can simply just put it back on the plan. We already measured the site distance at that curb cut, so.
Just out of curiosity, is there a, I don't think there is out in this setting. Is there or is there not a minimum separation requirement for curb cuts out on Watson Mill Road? And I probably should turn to Joe LaVera for that, or Bob Hamlin, you may know. You know, just for our ratification, is there a separation requirement?
Off the top of my head, Mr. Chairman, for residential driveways, no. There is, there is for commercial driveways.
Gotcha. Would there be? I want to keep hammering this, but would there be a separation requirement for the driveways on two and three to potentially what might be an access point from the fifty foot right away and the curb cut that's in, as part of that fifty foot right away to further develop to the back parcel? Is that back parcel potentially? And, you know, Jason, I hope your parents live forever. You know, you don't ever have to do anything with that land, but, but I'm recognizing that what you're doing is looking at the future, my friend. You've, you've, you've set up a fifty foot right away. And that obviously sets the stage for a street coming in there eventually, you know, to access that back parcel. Is there a minimum separation requirement between that curb cut of that access point and the driveways either side? Anybody answer that question for me?
Yeah, we don't. Sidestep that and ask Joe what, what his thoughts.
Right.
Yeah, there's, to my knowledge, Don, I'm not aware of anything where we require a minimum separation of a driveway from us. You know, we'll, we'll clearly try to get them as far away from an intersection as we can. But a lot of times we just have lots that, some of them are just so small that it's hard for us to just stipulate like a hundred feet from an intersection, because a lot of times we have lots that aren't a hundred feet to begin with. And we're, and we're not gonna deny someone access to the, to a lot, so. I mean, what he's showing there, I think, is fine in the future, so. I, again, I think we commented the same thing, I think if there was a road that went in, we would rather see those driveways be off that road than off of Watson Mills. I understand what Jason's saying, and if it's gonna be just for a single family house out back there, then, then I can understand, you know, not wanting to get into the shared thing. So, you know, it's, are you, are you right, I mean, I think it's clearly being set up for it to be a road someday in the future. I do agree Watson Mills is a pretty quiet road, so having four curb cuts or maybe five on that stretch is not, not a lot, but I know we try to minimize and reduce where we can, so. I don't know if that's a lot of support for you, but I'm just saying, that's, that's kind of how we look at it as well.
Well, let me put it this way, Joe, if I'm not mistaken, and I can't point to the exact section, I got caught up on this a couple of years ago, there's a corner clearance requirement in the ordinance, and I think it's under seven oh eight, might be under seven oh eight. And I think the corner clearance requirement is at least seventy-five feet. Doesn't look like what, you know, you're proposing here, Jason, has a problem with that. You know, with those driveways being within seventy-five feet of what would potentially be a curb cut into a street. You know, and that, and therefore a corner. But, and, and I don't know, Bob, if that got carried into the new ordinance or not, I would assume it did. There would be no reason for them to eliminate it in drafting the new ordinance. But I did get caught up in, in that on a property down the beach a few years ago, where I had to move my driveway to meet seventy-five foot. I think it's a seventy-five foot corner setback requirement, even for residential. Mr. Webby.
Yes, the driveway on lot three is ninety feet from where a proposed curb cut would be coming out of that fifty, fifty foot strip.
The proposed curb cut or the right of way?
Up, the curb cut. So for curb cut, the curb cut would be about ninety feet.
Okay, I think we need to look at the ordinance, just to make sure that we're, you know, we're meeting that requirement. It doesn't say, I don't know that it says curb cut, it says corner clearance. And so, you know, in deference, I think it would, it would be referring to the, you know, the property ones. Jeff, you got your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess, you know, I could kind of see that if they were proposing it as a right of way, but currently they're not. It's just access to the back lot. But then that kind of gets me thinking, if that's the access to the back lot, that wouldn't meet the minimum road frontage for a buildable lot unless it was an access, right, because we can't have flag lots and other odd shaped locks with narrow strips of land to get to other parcels. So my question, I guess, I don't know if Bob or Joe could answer it. Would that rear lot be actually a buildable lot if it only has fifty feet of frontage on Watson Mills Road? Would that have to be an established, you know, roadway or easement to create frontage for that rear lot, I mean? That's my, my question, I think the smallest previous frontage was seventy-five feet and that was like in an R, R two zone, I didn't see the. I guess that's my question, maybe Bob Hamlin could answer that, if that will be a buildable lot with a fifty foot frontage on Watson Mills Road.
This, this is Dana, I think I can answer your question pretty quickly. The, the real lot, I got a screen share up, has frontage on, on Watson Mill Road, which exceeds the minimum requirement in this area here. I go to, go to the boundary survey here. So that area right there, curve six has two hundred and eight feet of frontage on that, on that, on the Watson Mill Road at this point. Then plus the fifty feet that's over here.
Yeah, that, that takes care of it.
Not only that, but I believe Saco has a backlog provision, I think you only required what, twenty-five feet? And you can do a back, you could split up the one backlog.
Yeah, but the fact that you're subdividing this property and, and, you know, doing all kinds of things with lot lines makes the backlog availability go away for you. So, but, once you're done subdividing here, there's no potential for a backlog.
Okay, alright, so, so just for future reference, so the backlog is kind of remaining land right now? So, does that backlog provision count, even though you go through subdivision, or does it count for remaining land as well? Just for future knowledge.
Yeah, the, the only time you can do a backlog is if you've got a piece of property that has been untouched in terms of of all its lot lines being just as they are when you proposed a backlog, as they existed back in nineteen eighty-five.
Okay, alright.
So gentlemen, you would, if you move forward, as you move forward with this, and the reason I brought it up is I don't want this to come back, you know, at you in the future, is just verify that you've got the corner clearances on watch two and three with the driveways to the proposed right away. Not the curb cuts, the proposed right away. And I point you to section, I think, I think it's in, seven oh eight is parking, it might not be seven oh eight. Maybe it is, anyway. I can't point to the exact section in the ordinance, but I got caught up in this before because I had to move a drive.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear, so you're looking to have seventy-five feet between the edge of the driveway and the edge of the right of way?
To be honest with you, Jason, I'm not sure it's seventy-five, it may be fifty, I think it's seventy-five. Cause I think that's what I got caught up in, okay? And, and if the, if the new ordinance enacted on April eleventh has not changed, then that requirement still sits there somewhere, my friend. Okay, and so, and so, I would be, it would be, you know, I would advise you to go look at it and make sure that those driveways you place on that plan are at least seventy-five feet from the corner of that fifty foot right of way.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah. Just to satisfy everybody, okay, don't want that to come back, you know, on you in the future.
No, no, I, I completely understand, I mean, I, I have a subdivision over in Saco, we gotta move a house because we didn't have the setbacks for.
Yeah, there you go, you know, things happen. Any other questions, comments, members of the board? We do need to have a public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Just wanted to point out, I just found, I think what you're looking for, Article two thirty-seven oh nine E, corner clearance for driveways.
There you go.
Clearance is the minimum distance measured parallel to a roadway between the nearest curb, pavement, or shoulder line of an intersecting public way and the nearest edge of a driveway entrance or exit, excluding its radius. The recommended corner clearance for entrances for unsignaled intersections is a hundred feet with a minimum of fifty feet. The recommended corner clearance for signalized intersections is a hundred and twenty-five feet with seventy-five feet. That's pretty specific to, you know, street intersections, not existing driveways.
So it sounds like and, and a minimum, it would be fifty feet, up to seventy-five, is that correct?
I guess the best thing would be for you guys to review Article two thirty-seven oh nine.
Yeah.
That seems to be where the context is held for traffic and highway access.
One of the problems I had on traffic and highway access, and, and thank you, Jeff, for pointing that out, because it brought back to me the signalized, unsignalized intersections. What it, what it doesn't talk about, it talks about shall be at least fifty, shall be seventy-five, but can be reduced to fifty or whatever, doesn't say who reduce, who does that, okay? And so, what needed to happen in the new ordinance, and I never got it in there, was it needed to say that the planning board did that, you know, whenever that, that was applied for, didn't happen. But to your point, they may be perfectly fine, you know, with what they're proposing. I would just go back and verify it, as Jeff indicates. Go back and take a look at two oh three seven oh nine E. That was the old ordinance, Jeff, was that the old ordinance?
Yeah, that's correct, and probably had a touch base a little bit, because this application was in before the information of the new ordinance. So I'm assuming that's the standard we'll be reviewing it under, isn't that, Mr. Hamlin?
Yeah, to Bob's point, yeah, yeah, Bob, that's probably right, isn't it?
I, I, you, all excellent questions here. But the, the fact is that it's all about that substantive review threshold. Just, just as we saw for the Saco Island project that's currently before us. Because this applicant is newly before the board and, and no substantive review of any sort took place before the new ordinance became effective, they, they are absolutely under the new ordinance.
And I would hazard a guess, Jeff, from what I remember about when I was doing my review of the proposed ordinance, that hasn't changed. There were no changes made to that. But, you know, Jason and Mr. Webby, you ought to go back and take a look at that, just to make sure. You know, just, just dot that I, cross that T.
We will do that.
Make sure you're okay in, in that regard, yeah.
It seems like we've gotten into fairly substantive review, so I should have probably interrupted before this, but we also have not yet found the application complete.
Good point, Isabel. Boy, I'm gonna have Isabel do my job for me from now on, she's doing it better than I do. No question about it. Alright, anything preventing us from making a finding that the application is complete, ladies and gentlemen, Joyce?
Mr. Chair, the request for waivers.
Oh, yes, you're right. See, once again, you folks are doing, you're keeping me in one. So Bob, specifically, if you could run down for us again what the waivers were?
Yeah, look, I'm, I'm just flipping through the pages here.
Okay.
This is one of the, one of the drawbacks of being electronic.
Yeah.
Age ninety-two, Bob.
I got forty pages together, hang on here.
Ninety-two, okay, there they are, yeah. Three of them, right?
Working on it, bear with me. This is, this is one of those times I would contend a human being is faster than the faster than the computer. Alright, I'm close, bear with me. Okay. Waiver of submission requirement, Article five, section five oh two E four stormwater drainage of the subdivision standards. And so, stormwater standards, and then the submission requirements for the management of store, of service, surface drainage waters. Five oh two E four proposed arrangements for, arrangements for storm drainage. And then finally, five oh two C seventeen, street plans and profiles. So, as, as is clear, much this is all about stormwater drainage. They have not tripped the threshold for a stormwater plan, so I would, staff would recommend that those waivers each be granted. And clearly, they are proposing no new street or road, so certainly would be the same for that single item having to do with plans and profiles.
Gotcha. Okay, motion to accept, put to approve the waivers as requested?
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce, I move that the board grant a waiver of submission requirement, Article five, section five oh two E four stormwater drainage of the subdivision standards and sections five oh two D fifteen plan for the management of surface drainage waters, five oh two E four, proposed arrangements for storm drainage, and five oh two C seventeen, street plans and profiles of the submission checklist, as the project is of such a nature as to make the information unnecessary.
Thank you, Joyce, is there a second?
This is Alyssa, I'll second.
Alyssa's seconds, thank you. Discussion by members of the board. I sense none, I'll poll members of the board, Alyssa.
Yes.
Jeff Grossman.
Yes.
Matt.
Yeah.
Joyce.
Yes.
Jeff Broshu.
Yes.
Chair vote, yes, reputable indicator vote is six oh, find the application or to, to grant the waivers as requested. Now, application complete.
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce again, I move to find the application for preliminary subdivision review complete.
Is there a second?
This is Alyssa, I'll second.
Alyssa's seconds, thank you. Discussion by members of the board.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, is there still an outstanding issue with, you know, the, the fact that it's a subdivision and the utilities not being underground? Or where it's preliminary, can they modify that on their, their next go around, next review?
Do we vote on that tonight, to do a waiver tonight, or do we have to wait for the next meeting?
Well, I'm not sure, is it a waiver?
I think because it's a subdivision, we would have to request a waiver to do the overhead power, because subdivisions do require underground power. But where we're not building streets, who are not extending power lines, we could just utilize the existing poles that are in place.
Then why don't we approach it that way? That's a good point, you know, why don't we, why don't we decide if we're going to, now, what specific section of the subdivision regulations, Bob, are we dealing with? So that we can reference that in the motion.
Boy, Mr. Chairman, you, you ask an excellent question, but in that document to me, I'll start looking, but I don't have that at my fingertips.
I can ask questions all night long, Bob.
Yeah, so I'm sure you can.
I, I can be helpful that way.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff, I don't know if it'll help Mr. Hamlin. But in the, in the old section, it's subdivision regulations ten dot fifteen dot one. And it pretty much reads, all utilities including house connections shall be placed underground at the time of initial construction. Street lighting circuit wiring shall also be placed underground, except where approved by the city to be installed overhead on existing utility poles. Complete location plans prepared by a master electrician, yada, 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 about the location of the installations. Complete location plans prepared by a master electrician, yada, 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 about the location of the installations. So I would assume that would be the section that we'd be granting a waiver for, which apparently now is what, eight oh four?
Yeah. Yeah.
Isabel was just on that for us, okay.
We're so lucky to have Isabel keeping us straight with all these new numbers.
Kidding, no kidding.
Thank you, Isabel.
What the heck we would do? So it's all related to eight oh four?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yes.
I moved to grant a waiver to section eight oh four. Utilities underground um, due to the fact that they are not constructing any new road services. They could be served by the existing utility poles.
Um, there was still a mo- sorry to interrupt, there was still a motion on the table that hadn't been taken up yet.
Yeah, I, I'll retract my draft, my proposed motion.
Okay. Joyce, will you withdraw your motion?
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion.
Alyssa, you withdraw your second?
Um, yes, I was planning to just mention that I think for the application submission requirements, it's on our chart that Bob has created, it just says that we're looking for the applicant to locate all utilities above and below ground, which they've located on those existing poles, so I don't know that we can't find the application complete with what they've given us, but then indicate that we're allowing them to tap into overhead lines. But if we need to go the other direction, that's fine.
I don't know that we're correct one way or the other. I think we're gonna come out in the end, you know, fine.
So I'll throw my second and we'll go back in the direction of the waiver.
Gotcha. Okay, so.
I think the clarity, uh, just to be on the safe side, have it recorded just to do the waiver, please.
Well, that's what we're doing. That's what we're doing, Jason. We, you know, the motion right now is to provide a waiver to new section eight oh four, the subdivision regulations requiring you to do, you know, underground buried utilities. Okay?
Okay, yeah, I might have misunderstood. I thought Alyssa was, was mentioning that we wouldn't have to because uh, the way it was already introduced, but, uh, carry on.
Yeah, thank you. So the motion is to grant a waiver to eight oh four. New sec- new subdivision regulation, section eight oh four. Um, Jeff made the motion, Alyssa the seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Um, I don't think we had made the motion at this point. We had withdrawn it, but yes, I will make the motion to grant a waiver for section eight oh four for underground utilities.
You made that motion, the waiver, the, the motion I was asking, you know, to be withdrawn, is the motion that Joyce made that seconded by Alyssa to find the application complete. Okay? So having granted this additional waiver, now we've removed, we've removed any impediment, any further impediment to find the application complete. Okay? So again, your motion, Jeff, seconded by Alyssa, is to provide a waiver to section eight oh four. Is there any further discussion of the motion? All right, let me poll members of the board. Matt?
Yeah.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Record will indicate a vote six oh. Now, it may be appropriate if there's no other items standing in the way to make a motion to find the application complete.
Mr. Chair, I'll, um, move to find the application for preliminary subdivision review complete. This is Joyce.
Is there a second?
This is Alyssa, I'll second.
Alyssa's seconds, thank you. Discussion, members of the board? Then I'll poll the board. Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Record will indicate the vote is six oh, find the application complete. All right, given what we've gone, where we've gone up to this point, um, is there anything further you want to discuss before we open the public hearing? Now, it might be appropriate at this point to have a motion to open a public hearing?
Chair, this is Jeff. I moved to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, this is Joyce. I second.
Joyce, thank you. Without discussion by members of the board, I'll poll the board. Jeff Broshu?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Jeff Grossman?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. Record will indicate the vote is six oh. Public hearing is open. Isabel, do we have anyone waiting to speak?
Uh, yes, the, I'll just remind everyone that if you would like to speak to use the digital raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen to be recognized. Um, the first person with their hand raised is Sarah Rockwell. Sarah, just unmute and state your name and address for the record. Sarah, I can see that you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Sarah, you might have to use a different microphone. We can't hear you on our end. Or try calling in from a cell phone. Um, while we wait for Sarah to, um, see if she can change her microphone settings, um, is there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this application? Dawn, I don't have anyone else with their hands raised at this time.
Okay, so Sarah's probably obviously still having some
Yeah.
technical problems. Well, wait a minute. I don't wanna, you know, I don't want her to miss the opportunity to say something if she wants to.
Sarah, if you use the, um, little triangle next to the mute button at the bottom of your screen, it allows you to select different microphones. You may have to do that. Or it also allows you to test your speaker and microphone and maybe identify what's wrong.
Nice here. Now she's muted again. Isabel, you can see that too. Now, now she's unmuted again.
Well. Sarah, we saw you unmuted, but we couldn't hear you if you were speaking.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, uh, city council meeting is moving on toward the, uh, end of their agenda. There's a couple of items that, um, fall on my plate. So, um, my, my supervisor has just reached out and wondered if I'm joining them. Um, if you folks think you could get along for the rest of the evening without me, I, I get to go to another party.
What do you?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Alyssa. I have one question for Bob before he leaves us.
Yeah. Gotcha. Go ahead.
So I was just catching in the packet, you mentioned that this applicant will likely need a waiver for sidewalks as well?
Yeah, sidewalks are required for subdivisions, uh, so that's not a submission requirement. Uh, but if the board, uh, agrees that sidewalks, you know, just don't make sense out in this part of town, uh, then the city ought to, I, I think you'll find language saying the, the board must specifically waive. Um, otherwise the applicant shall provide it. So the board should take that action, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good point, Alyssa. Bob, go have fun.
Yeah, thanks.
We'll do the best we can without you.
Okay, well, we'll see you next time. Thanks.
Okay, Sarah, if you're still with us, um, I'm putting up the information to dial into the meeting using a cell phone. Um, you'll have to use the number that I'm highlighting. It's, it's one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Um, and you may be prompted to enter a webinar ID as well, which is on my screen. I also see that you're muted again, and I was wondering if you wouldn't mind trying to unmute so we might be able to hear you. Sarah, if you'd like to participate, um, I think probably the best way is to just dial in from a phone.
Isabel, this is Alyssa. Can she also just chat with you somehow through Zoom?
Um, we don't have that ability with the way the meeting is set up, unfortunately.
Isabel, this is Joyce. I, this phone number here, the six oh four number is, I think, new on our screen because there were only five attendees, so I'm, I'm thinking this is her and she might just need to do the, what is it, star nine?
Yep. Sarah, if you can hear that, just do star nine on your cell phone or follow the prompts to get in. I've just, I've allowed you to talk. You'll just have to unmute.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can. Um, we're getting a lot of feedback from the computer.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. We, uh, are getting a lot of feedback from your computer.
Well, what if, I'll, I'll play from my computer. And hopefully that will help.
That is helping a lot.
That, that's much better.
Okay. Um, just in listening to, um, what I've heard, um, number one, before I left Watson Mill Road, there was more traffic there because Wedgewood Estates li- you know, is located down the road and they have, I don't know how many houses, but forty-nine or something like that. Um, so a lot of people were cutting through. I'm not saying that Watson Mill Road is a thoroughway, but it certainly has, um, quite a bit of traffic, which, um, when I saw the driveways, and I don't mind, you know, I'm trying to sell in there, I don't mind. Um, but the driveways seem to be in a couple of areas, right where the two hills are. Um, there's a hill that comes up from Wedgewood Estates, down a hill, up a hill, right into where, um, House One would be. And then on the other end, there's another big hill that goes down over Nonsuch River and up where people don't tend to slow down. Um, so people might just wanna look at that as a, as a safety issue. Um, that was my concern about that. And there's also, um, from Wedgewood Estates, there's a storm drain down by the hill that's right on the other side of my property into Wedgewood that runs into, I think, Skilly Brook or one of the brooks right there. So, um, I don't know how, if Lot One would be affected by that or not. So those are the only things that I wanted to, uh, bring up that might need to be, um, looked at or um, by the, I didn't see any trouble with any of the, the rest of the plans, but I was just concerned about the safety and of the driveways and, you know, the storm drain.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So Isabel, do we have anybody else?
Um, I do not have anybody else on my list who was waiting to speak on this.
All right. Then could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. I moved to close the public hearing.
Jeff, thank you. Is there a second?
This is Alyssa, I'll second.
Alyssa's seconds. Without discussion, I'll poll members of the board, Alyssa?
Yes.
Jeff? Jeff Broshu, yeah.
Jeff Broshu, yes.
Yeah, Jeff Grossman, sorry.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Matt?
Yeah.
Chair vote, yes. Record will indicate the vote is six oh, close the public hearing. Back to members of the board, discussion of the sidewalk uh, as a remaining issue. What's your pleasure, board members?
Mr. Chair, this is Alyssa.
Yeah.
Um, just in reference to the sidewalk and also the curb cuts, um, I spent the first two thirds of my life living on Watson Mill Road, and now I live on Heath Road, and they're very different traffic-wise. Um, so I have no issue with granting a waiver for sidewalks. It obviously does not make sense on that road, um, given that there aren't any sidewalks to connect to. Um, and then also with the curb cuts, um, I just, I, I don't have an issue with what the applicant has proposed at this time.
All right, thanks, Alyssa. Members of the board, any differing opinions about the sidewalk or the curb cuts? And so, and you know, my intent here is without putting this through a formal vote, um, make any determination at the sidewalks. You know, we're not really required, you know, for this particular subdivision, nor does anything else need to be done relative to the curb cuts. So, members of the board, back to you. What are your thoughts? Joyce?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I agree with Alyssa. It, these would just be, you know, random sidewalks connecting to nowhere, which really doesn't make a lot of sense, uh, on Watson Mill Road.
All right, members of the, as a member to the board? Thoughts? Concerns, questions? Do we have any remaining issues that we haven't discussed that would be in the way of preliminary approval?
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff.
Yeah.
Not sure how it plays in, but the, the property between lots three and four, um, titled Big Ledge LLC, is the same mailing address as the applicant. Is this another one of his entities? So essentially in, in common ownership?
We'll get the app to, to address that.
It was, this was part of the property and was, it was the first lot out. And Jason does own Big Ledge LLC. So there was, there was a legal cut out of the property prior to the submission for the subdivision.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, Bob is not one, no longer here to advise, but I think if I remember in the package presented, and maybe Isabel, you could help us with this. I think Bob indicated that this, that lot was not part, not being considered part of the subdivision. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, I would just echo what Dana already said, that, that it was legally cut before the subdivision. I actually thought the requirement that Jeff might have been getting at was that you're supposed to show, um, all lots under control of the applicant, which whether they have as well, so. Even though it's.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Isabel. Jeff? For any concerns, are you all right with that?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm just, I'm reaching the end of my cognitive hours, I think, so.
Why, we all? Okay, other concerns, questions, members of the board? Are we at a point where it's appropriate? Joyce, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Well, I, I, I just wanted to address, um, Ms. Rockwell's comments about, um, sightlines. Um, I mean, my, my review of the plan seemed to indicate that the sightlines were quite sufficient for what's marked as a thirty mile an hour speed limit. I realize that's not necessarily how fast people go along that road, but, um, they are, it seems to be at least, I think, three hundred feet of, uh, sightline from any one driveway. So I didn't want her to think that we were, we were ignoring that issue or, or unaware of it, um, but it, it seemed to be addressed on the plan adequately for my purposes.
Good, thank you, Joyce.
Also, the, the board wants, uh, I'm gonna have, we'll have turnarounds in all the driveways, so people aren't backing onto Watson Mills Road. They'll be able to turn around in their own driveways and actually drive onto Watson Mills Road. Um, so it'd be safer. So if somebody is speeding up over that hill, um, you know, that, that gives them plenty of time to be able to see them coming, um, and not backing into the, into Watson Mills Road itself.
But for the record, Jason, you, you've, you can indicate to us that the requisite sightline distances are met for that road on each one of those driveways. Can you not?
Yes, we can.
That's correct. I mean, lot, lot one, looking, uh, uh, to the left is sight distance is four hundred and twenty-six feet. Looking to the right, it's five hundred feet. Lot number two, looking to the left is four sixty-two and to the right, six eighty-five. Lot three, looking to the left is three forty-seven, to the right, four eighty-nine. And lot four, uh, four, looking to the left is five seventy-one and to the right, three sixty-four. So they all exceed the three hundred foot requirement.
Good for the record. Thank you, sir. Members of the board. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Then is anyone prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would, I, I'd suggest maybe we add an additional condition of approval when it comes to it, that, um, that the driveways, um, on all lots include turnarounds so that backing out onto Watson Mill Roads discouraged. I, I realize Jason can't control how people drive in their own driveways, but if, if that's on the plans and people understand that when they put in their driveways, they have to put in turnarounds.
You could suggest not only that it be provided in the plan, but you could suggest potentially deed restrictions or codicils that would, that would require that to be done. Um, if that, if you think that's appropriate.
Uh,
Yeah.
We can, we can add a note to the plan that says that all driveways will have turnarounds on the, on the lot.
And then that may
that would be part of the record for the recording.
And that may be enough. Right? I mean, presumably somebody would not be able, whoever develops the property, Jason, whether it's you or somebody else, would not be able to build a house there without that provision because they would have to be in compliance with the subdivision plan.
That, that is correct. We, uh, we've done that quite a few times in the Town of Wells. Uh, whenever we're getting out the busy roads and stuff like that, uh, they request us to actually do a vehi- a vehicular turnaround. Um, and it's noted on the plan. Um, so, you know, we're pretty common. It's pretty common for us to do that down in Wells area. Um, that's why I suggested it here. Uh, with the septic systems being the front, most of the driveways are going to be, you know, probably seventy-five feet or more anyways. So it only makes sense to have some sort of turnaround, um, so people aren't backing off their driveways, um, at that distance as well. So it's a kind of a win-win.
So you'd be agreeable to having Joyce add that as, as, as an additional condition of approval?
Absolutely. I don't have any issues with that at all.
Gotcha. So Joyce, would you move that?
Yeah.
Make that part of your motion?
Give yourself a job now.
Uh, yes, I would make that part of my motion. Um, where am I? Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the preliminary subdivision plan for the proposed Watson Mill Road subdivision based on the findings of fact and conditions of approval dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, with an additional condition of approval that, uh, a notation be added to the plan requiring vehicular turnarounds, um, within each lot.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there a second?
This is Alyssa. Second for the
Alyssa.
Discussion.
Alyssa seconds for discussion. Discussion of the motion. Anyone?
This is Alyssa again. Just curious what we're doing with the sidewalks. Do we need to wrap that into this motion?
That's a good point. We didn't take that into consideration, did we?
I'm sure Joyce can craft something.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion, uh,
Okay.
to also provide that the requirement for sidewalks be waived due to the, uh, rural nature of Watson Mill Road.
All right. Thank you, Joyce. I assume your second still stands, Alyssa?
Yep, that's a great summary of that one. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion of the motion. All right, then I'll pull members of the board. Matt?
Yeah.
Jeff Grossman.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Jeff Broschu.
Yes.
Chair of vote, yes. Record will indicate vote is six oh. Preliminary subdivision approval granted. Good luck, gentlemen. We'll see you in a few weeks, whatever, when you come back for final.
Okay, thank you very much.
Members of the board, I don't want to hold you too long. Um, I want to thank uh, Isabel and Bob for putting together uh, the list that we requested last week of the, uh, the workshop items that we either knew were coming up or that they were suggesting. Wow, the list grew.
Well, that's sort of the priorities. Um, I have some more things on my sleeve as well, but.
Okay. This is quite a list, and, and obviously we're working on master plan developments right now. And I see us tied up with probably at least another workshop on that. But, uh, without discussing it tonight, because we're all tired as well, uh, I'd like you to be thinking about looking at this list and seeing, you know, what you think the priorities are, what, what you think we ought to tackle next. Uh, I know, Alyssa, I mean, I'm sorry, Isabel and Bob will have their own priorities because, uh, you know, the phone is slamming on their ears all day long and not ours, but, um, I, I didn't, I asked you to look at this list and, and see what you think you'd like to see worked on next. Jeff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thanks. I was wondering maybe, and I don't want to hold Isabel to put you on the spot, but did I understand, Mr. Hamlin, correctly tonight, that if an application before us is under review and it was filed prior to the new zoning ordinance taking effect on the eleventh, if there was no conversation, substantial conversation about it, we will be reviewing to the new standards? Is that correct? Or does it go by the date at which it was received by your office?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we received legal opinion that, um, applications are not grandfathered in under, well, we received this prior to the new zoning, so they were not grandfathered in under the previous zoning, um, until substantive review had occurred by this board, if it would, if it was a application requiring board review. So even though staff, as you know, uh, does substantive review on applications, uh, the legal opinion was that that was not enough, that it was, um, that an application was not grandfathered until it receives substantive review by the planning board. Um, so for example, Saco Island East would be grandfathered under previous zoning. We saw that before the new zoning took effect. Um, at this point, hmm, most, if not all of our applications, probably except for that one, at least that I can remember off the top of my head, are now going to be reviewed under new slash current as of four twelve zoning.
Okay, thank you. So I, I want to thank you for bailing me out by getting me to the right article numbers tonight, and I will do my best to get a printed copy of the new one, because I like to have my, my documents going. So I apologize for steering us astray with the wrong sections tonight. And I will, um, you know, get a new copy printed out. If that's how we'll be reviewing them. I thought we were reviewing them by the date received, but that's, makes perfect sense to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, members of the board. Anybody? Yeah, Alyssa.
All right, just real quick, Isabel, our schedule coming up.
Yep.
Twentieth, we don't have a meeting next week on the twenty-seventh, right?
That is correct. We're off next week. We're back on May fourth. I do just want to do, sorry, Alyssa, if you had more. I just want to do a quick plug for our comp plan meetings coming up. Um, so the consultants from Stand Tech that we're working with, as well as some, uh, various stakeholders are going to be holding, um, four different, uh, topic meetings coming up. The first one will be on the twenty-ninth. Yeah, next Thursday.
First one this Thursday, the twenty-second?
I thought it was just Thursday. Isabel.
Oh. Thursday.
You're right, um.
Down, downtown is this Tuesday, right? Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, it, you're right. So downtown is this Thursday. Um, the twenty-ninth will be a discussion about transportation and mobility. We'll take a week off, uh, the week of the sixth. We'll be back on, uh, May thirteenth for a discussion about housing and, uh, development. And then we'll be back on the twentieth for a discussion about sustainability. Um, I have been maintaining a webpage. It's just sacomaine.org slash comp underscore plan. Um, if you want the links to any of those, if you're not on the, if you didn't get those over email or anything. Um, and we also have a lot of like interactive maps and webpages. It's just interesting to check out. So just a shameless plug for those coming up.
It's okay.
And then our meetings for the fourth and the seventeenth and the eighteenth, is that right?
Um, our meetings next month will be the fourth and then, uh, the seventeenth for a joint meeting of council, and then the eighteenth for a planning board meeting. Yes.
That puts us in a tight spot because if we, we're not meeting again until the fourth. And as we talked about tonight, you know, we're talking about, uh, continuing master plan development discussions next workshop. Uh, I don't know how much we're going to get done, but then it puts us and you, Bob and you, Isabel, on the hook to have something substantive to be discussing with the council on the seventeenth. Um, if we don't have another meeting between the fourth and the seventeenth, then we're not going to have much of an, an opportunity to finalize what we want to talk to the council about in that joint meeting about master plan developments. I don't know how we want to, how we want to deal with that, but, um, you know, how do we deal with that? What do you, you got any thoughts, board members? What we should do? God forbid, I should ask for another meeting. Yeah.
I think we see how far we get between now and the fourth, and then how far we get the night of the fourth, and then after that, they, technically, it's almost two weeks before that.
Almost two weeks. You're right, Wes. I mean, we may be able to, hopefully we'll come out of the fourth with enough clear direction, Isabel, to you and Bob, so that you can prepare something that will be, have some meaning to it when we plunk it down in front of the council on the seventeenth. Um, and obviously, you know, we'll, we'll be hoping that you guys get it out soon enough to us so that we can look at it, you know, at least like a week in advance of the seventeenth, if that's possible. I know that's asking a lot of you guys, but you know, um, council, you, you know, listen, the council's really hot about this. They really are hot about M P Ds. Okay, and I'm serious about this too, because Council Berman has been in touch with me a number of times about this. He's kind of taken this on, you know, as an issue where being a new counselor, you know, he's interested in getting, you know, hip deep, you know, into this stuff, and I don't, I don't blame him. He wants to understand what's going on. He wants to be part of it, so you know, I haven't made any promises to him, but you know, they're expecting a lot from us. You know, I mean, go solve this problem. Planning board is what they told us. Planning board and staff, go solve this problem. And so it would really be nice to bring them something substantial, you know, on the seventeenth, where they can look at it and go, eh, sounds good, guys. There, no, you're out to lunch. You need to go back to work. Whatever. All right, I don't want to hold you up anymore. Thanks so much, people. Have a good evening. Have a good week. Talk to you soon.
Bye.